Alrighty folks, good afternoon. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. So, welcome everyone. Great to see you. I will go ahead and I'm going to pass it over to Superintendent Ariano so we can get on with this workshop.
I appreciate it, President Wyatt. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here a little bit early today for our workshop. But before I get started, I just want to thank everyone on our SBCUSD team who this afternoon spent time putting this all together for us. Today was a tremendous amount of work, so I want them to know that we very much appreciate their efforts. So today, we are meeting to do two things today. First is to introduce you and our community to Jim DeLeesia, who I'll turn it over here in a few seconds to Jim. He will be the consultant that will be working with us and with Cabinet these next several months. So he's here today via Zoom to talk a little bit about the process, the timeline, what our expected outcomes are going to be, and to answer any questions that you may have of Jim. Then, when Jim exits the meeting today, then we're going to jump into working with the board to establish some areas of focus for the 2324 year. Previously, you know it is the Board Top 10. We didn't necessarily have to make it 10. It could be 3, it could be 12. So, I didn't want to name it Top 10. We'll just name it Areas of Focus and I'll explain that once we're done with Mr. DeLeesia. So, before I get into introducing Mr. DeLeesia, I want to remind our audience and the Board that prior to my arrival, previous administration and our wonderful Cabinet worked hard to put together something called Vision 2025, which we continue to work on and work towards completing. But now, we are at the place where we must now think about beyond 2025, which is our vision for 2030. I share with you, an example at your table, something that we had created in my previous district. As a matter of fact, giving Mary Roan all the credit, this was her creativity in terms of this little pamphlet here that you see in front of you from my previous district. This served as our multi-year vision for the district there. And as you heard me say, I'm not a big believer in big strategic plans because that just ends up being a two-inch binder and notebook that nobody really knows or understands or feels relevant. And so, this document helped us better have our district staff know the relevancy, the work that they're doing each day, their impact to the goals. Plus, it became a great marketing tool for the district and a great identity marker for the district. So, I share this with you, not to copy what's done because we're very different districts, very different ideals, very different goals. But just to give you an idea, this is something that we want to create in terms of something concrete to put out into the community when we're done. So, having said that, it is my honor and my pleasure to introduce Jim DeLeesia, who I met during my time as a State Board Director with the Association of California School Administrators. He did a wonderful job helping us put together the multi-year vision for that organization. And what I loved mostly about Jim is just his cool, calm demeanor and not wanting to impose himself on the process, but wanting to be a facilitator for us. So Jim, welcome. And I'm going to turn it over to you and we'll follow your lead today, sir.
Okay. I don't know that if I've ever been described as cool and calm, but I'll take it, Mauricio. Thank you very much for that. Well, and thank you just for a very few minutes of your time as we begin to launch this multi-year visioning process. I did get a chance to get to know you guys at least a little bit by looking at your bios on the website. And I'm very excited to work with each of you in this process and incorporate the depth of your experience, not only within the district, but in the community and in public education overall, into this, into the richness of what we're going to gather and work together on. So, I thought it would be good at the start of this that we share a little bit about the process we're going to go through, what are some of the important components of it, how we're going to reach out broadly to the various stakeholders in a school district as part of making these decisions, and of course, interacting with you throughout the process as the Board as well. So let me go ahead and put just a few slides on the screen. Okay. In talking with Mauricio and sort of what has been done before and trying to continue that journey of how the district should evolve and aligning all the stakeholders around that vision, we thought it was important to set forth a couple of different goals here. And so, what you see on the screen is sort of our operating goals for this process. First and foremost, to make these kinds of decisions, you really need to have context. And things are shifting so fundamentally in public education overall, but certainly in our communities and with the various stakeholders we serve. So, a big chunk of the beginning of this, of this process will be to gather the information and the perspective and the input we need to really understand what is shifting and how can this district, you know, grow its impact and performance? Where are those opportunities to do that? And so, that's sort of the process we're launching right now. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. But then, based on that, roll up our sleeves and build a deep sense of shared purpose, direction, and operating values for the district. A framework, if you will, of the beginning of this multi-year vision. Set goals then, within each of the critical performance areas of a school district that can guide and sort of align resources at all levels. This isn't just a top-level district piece, but it is really something that hopefully all levels of the district can share and do their own goal-setting within the umbrella of this multi-year vision. So, it should lay out how the district should evolve in critical performance areas or call them pillars. I like to call them pillars because they're that kind of stability for the district. And part of this, and I think Mauricio is very, this was very important to have as a part of this, the vision act also as a public-facing document that can hold the district accountable to the community it serves. And so, it plays a very important dual role. And so, we'll be thinking about what it says and how it resonates as a community piece with the district as a community hub. And then, of course, it was very important to have a process that engages a broad section of stakeholders throughout so that different perspectives and ideas can be incorporated and that this isn't just a vision that the Cabinet or the Board of Education is going to own. But if we've given stakeholders a voice in the process, then it's, then it's the goal that they not only understand the multi-year vision, but they themselves own it and will support its completion as well. And then finally, it was important, as Mauricio and I discussed sort of where the district was, that as part of this process, we also think about not just creating the multi-year vision, but how do we, what's the execution look like? How do we monitor it? How do we report on it? How do we evaluate it? And how do we keep it fresh? And so, we'll be doing some thinking about sort of an institutionalized way that the district should do this as we go into the future, so that it's sustainable. Okay. So that's what we're setting out to do. So, a little bit about how we intend to do this. So, we're going to operate, a process like this obviously needs to be efficient and yet inclusive. And so, what we've crafted here are three different working groups, if you will, that will own a piece of the process or come together to contribute to this process. We'll have the Cabinet, the District Cabinet be sort of the core group that is consistent throughout the process. They'll come together and engage in each step of the process. They will seek and consider the input from the broad range of stakeholders that we're reaching out to. And they will actually develop and ultimately recommend the multi-year vision for approval. So they're sort of that core consistent group along the way. Obviously, there's you folks, the Board of Education, who we want to have touch this process at multiple stages so that when ultimately you have your final workshop and see this document, it doesn't look like a foreign, a foreign document. You've seen it, you've had a chance to input it and touch it and be comfortable with it and then ultimately approve it as the multi-year vision for the district. And then, we have this big, rich, diverse group of district and community stakeholders. As large as they are, we still want to engage them at various points in this process. And so, they're made up of different layers and faculty and administration of the district, but also of the community. We're out to them now with some initial assessment. I know Mauricio spent the last couple of months really engaging various sectors of the community in this process as well. And we intend to give them a chance to weigh in when the draft gets a little further down the road. So, three working groups all have their unique roles in this process, all under the goal of trying to broaden ownership and input into what we're doing. Okay, so a little bit about how we're going to do this or what, what we're going to try to gather and how we're going to do that. To arrive at the best decisions, obviously important decisions for the district, I think it's important for this, this process to be knowledge-based. In other words, everybody comes to this process with their individual experience, their ideas, their perspectives, and that's great. And the richness of how these groups are made up is really going to help us. But even beyond that, we have to have a process where people are willing to stretch their own experience and perspective and entertain ideas and experiences that are not their own. And so, we are going to try to reach wide and deep in the district, the community, and beyond to sort of import information and perspectives that are not within, of an individual's experience per se. So there's kind of three buckets of information we're seeking. Externally, obviously, we need to look at the district's position in a community that continues to shift. We need to understand those shifts and how the profile and the makeup and the needs and expectations of the community are changing. The state, obviously, the district does not hyper-operate in isolation. What's happening at the state level, you know, politically, legislatively, regulatory, and in the department at the state level is going to influence in part what the district does and the resources it has, and we need to understand that level as well, as well as just professional trends of school districts across the country and how, what are best practices and what are innovative ways that districts are meeting the needs of those that they serve. So the external net is wide and hopefully will bring a lot of rich insight and information. And then, of course, the second bucket is the input from various stakeholder groups. I know that your superintendent has been, again, months conducting forums, using Thought Exchange with district employees and students and parents and community partners and gathering a lot of information. We're going to do surveys and interviews and focus groups to give everybody a chance to contribute upfront in this process as we go forward. And then finally, obviously, internal bucket. We have to understand how the district is performing now. What are the indicators of that so that we can know where we're starting from and have a launchpad for greater impact and greater influence and performance as a district? So, lots of good input and information for the, for the working groups to consider. So where are we and what's next? By mid-December, we should be finished with the research phase. We've got a baseline survey out there now in the field to yourselves, as the Board, to the Cabinet and to the broader influencers in the community that I think, if I understand correctly, Mauricio, the Board has had a lot of hand in crafting who's, who would be part of this community influencer group. And that survey is out to them as well. We've, we've got about a dozen responses. I would love to see that double, if not triple, in the next couple of weeks to get a really good baseline of perspect differing perspectives that we need to take into account. Once that is done, I'm going to sort of look at that baseline survey. And I know Katrin has been scheduling with you all and with the Cabinet, individual interviews that I can have with you. And my, the purpose of those interviews is to really sort of probe what I'm finding from the baseline survey and get your deeper thoughts about emerging issues and trends, both in the community and where you think the district has opportunities, aspects of difference, different district performance we can look at. So those will be individual interviews to get your perspective on what we're finding in some of the baseline work that we've been doing. And I know those are being scheduled for the end of November and the beginning of December. So that'll feed into the summation of all of the research we've been collecting. The Cabinet will have its first meeting mid-December where we'll look at the data, sort of try to figure out what is it telling us? Where do we see some opportunities we want to explore further? And then, they will continue to meet on and off in the process, both virtually and in person, up until the time where we've got a final review draft of the multi-year vision. You will then see that draft. I think we've got a scheduled workshop, more in-depth workshop with you on February 20th, where you'll have a chance to react to the draft, add your final commentary to that. And then, at that time, we're going to go back out to the broader community group with some of these, the concepts that are coming out of this multi-year vision and give them a final opportunity to weigh in and react and give us that dynamic sort of feedback. And then, everything comes back to you for final review and approval on March 5th. So, we, it seems like a long way off, but we have a lot to do and we're very excited about moving the process forward. So Mauricio, let me stop there and see if there's any questions I can answer or just comments about the Board's view of this, this multi-year vision and how you hope to be able to use this in your work? I'd love to hear that. But anything else I can, I can comment on or answer for you at this time?
Thanks, Jim. Let me just make a couple of comments and I'll turn it over to the Board for any questions or comments they may have of you, Jim. So just to let you know, Jim, I think the only reasons why you've received 12 is we have not sent it out to the stakeholder group because I was waiting till after today to see if there was any other learning that I would take away with today. But we will have that list finalized by the end of this week and Katrin will, will send out that survey to that group that represents all sectors of the community. So I just wanted to make that clarifying point.
That makes sense, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. And then, the second comment I want to make is just to the Board and to the community in general. I want to reemphasize that, recall that we've already had a pretty extensive Thought Exchange experience where we had over 1,000 people with our community respond and provide us feedback. And through the AI system of Thought Exchange, it generates a list of the top things that our community wants. I also want to remind the Board that we did it with our high school students. And we had, was it over 3,000 or 5,000 students? 3,000 students that gave us 5,000 thoughts. That's correct. And we had the superintendent forums where we had really good attendance. And so, a lot of information has been collected already. And of course, information he'll collect as he interviews all of you, the surveys that you've completed in Cabinet will just be additional information. Jim has also received copies of testing data, data about our schools. He has seen the search results from the superintendent's search when he got the community input about what the community was looking like so that Jim could get an idea of what the community is kind of looking for and is asking for as part of our process. So, just wanted to make those additions, Jim. So thank you. So I'll turn it over to President Wyatt and have him kind of facilitate the next steps here.
Alright, thank you Superintendent Ariano. Again, for expecting the Board to process, so I'm going to go ahead and start over here with Ms. Abigail. Abigail, you had a question?
Yes, oh, yes, I do. Thank you so much for joining us and thank you Superintendent for bringing this together. I do want to ask Jim if, you know, a little bit about his background, what other districts has he helped service? Just so I can have a frame of the kind of scope of work you've done for school districts like ours?
Absolutely, yeah. I've had my own consulting business for 26 years now and a variety of types of clients. Professional and trade associations, which is again, my work with the California School Superintendent's and Administrators Organization. Public entities, including various cities, school districts, counties, and nonprofits as well. So I have had a chance to work with superintendents in general about those issues and have worked with school districts of the like. For example, currently working with a small school district up on the central coast in Orchid. I think the total number of students probably could fit in one of your high schools. So it's been an interesting work with them to see sort of the commonality in the issues between school districts, but also the vast differences, both in geography and profile and size of the districts. I also have a chance, and this may or may not be important to you, but I also have a chance to have worked with a number of private schools. And it's sort of interesting for me to get a sense of education overall, both on how the public school trends impact that and what the private schools are trying to do and to develop sort of a niche of education that they serve as well. So, public entities in general, school districts as well, public and private.
Thank you for that. I was also going to ask with regards to the survey. So that survey, the one that was sent out to a board member, I know I wasn't able to complete it. It was where it asked about five different questions. Is that similar to what they're, they're sending out to other? And so, I'm wondering, for me, I found the questions a little bit more difficult. So I'm wondering if maybe we could have it user-friendly, it could be community-friendly, parent-friendly. I know maybe that was one of the reasons because I've been so busy and I found the questions a little bit complicated that I didn't even attempt to try to complete the questions. So, you know, maybe we're just looking at that as well? Yeah, yeah. Or just give some ideas of a parent, parent and leader, community leaders friendly version?
Yeah, let me, let me comment on that because I think the original design of that survey, it wasn't necessarily intended for the community audience.
Okay.
It was more for the Board and the Cabinet where the questions are pretty meaty and pretty thought-provoking and really draw upon your experience and hopes for the district. I think, I'm glad you mentioned that because I do think, Mauricio, that I probably should take that survey. And while you're still building the list, I think I ought to alter those questions to be, as you just said, more user-friendly for a community audience. That was not the original intention of that survey. So thank you for bringing that up. And let me work on that and get you something in a couple of days on that, Mauricio?
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Abigail.
Okay, great, thank you. That was it.
Alright, Ms. Alexander for the show.
Sure. I'd like to first say thank you for joining us and all the work you've done thus far. So we appreciate that and thank you Superintendent Ariano for bringing this together. My question is more related to, once we get past the surveys and the input from everybody that was contacted, what are the general rules and assumptions? And maybe like the ground rules based on, you know, we select community people, you know, we gave names, we submitted them. And so then, once we select them, what is the expectation in terms of their rules of engagement? That's the first question.
Sure, yeah. Right now, we, we intend to touch that group twice. One is in this baseline survey, which we just talked about amending to be more user-friendly. One is the baseline survey. And then, we intend as part of the process, and we have to figure out the timing of this, of when we want to draw those folks together. And I'm thinking the format of a virtual forum via Zoom, a 90-minute virtual forum where I can take concepts for discussion, put them on the table, show them draft statements, wherever we think in the timing of the process that they're, they need to touch this process again. So what we intend is the baseline survey input and then a virtual forum, likely when we've got a draft and some concepts we want to get feedback around. So I would say probably the January, early February timeframe. That's what we plan right now. If there's other ideas of more ways or more touchpoints, then we're certainly open to that.
Can I add one piece to that, Jim? So Mauricio, thank you for the question. Once we identify those 40 to 50 folks and each one of you provided me a listed name, so we're going to make sure that each board member is represented in terms of the folks on that committee. They'll receive an introductory kind of email from me, first of all, welcoming them, thanking them, asking if they want to participate, right? Because just because we have their names doesn't mean that they participate, but I'm pretty sure they will. And just giving them an explanation of what their role is in this process.
Thank you, that's a nice one.
So, like Jim said, really it's to bounce our drafts off our community partners to see if we are in line with the community thought, so.
So just to pull on that, what if 50% of those people say, "I'm not interested", then what is our next plan of action?
Yeah, I appreciate that. We have a list of, boy, well over 150 community partners on top of the names that each one of you gave to me. So I'm pretty certain that I'll be able to find 40 to 50 people who will make themselves available for the one, two, or like Jim said, we might need them three or four times depending on the feedback. But I'm pretty confident we'll get a good, solid, consistent team to stick with us through the whole process.
Okay. So the only reason I ask is because the timeline here is pretty constraining. We're only looking at two quarters, so that's what I was wondering.
Yeah. The other options are, no, no, the other, great question. The other options are multiple. I mean, you know, in operating and facilitating virtual forums, the quality of the discussion, I mean, you can do breakout sessions and all that, but the quality of discussion starts to degrade a little bit if the group gets too large. I mean, you can use polling and chat features and all kinds of aspects of Zoom to get engagement, but we may end up saying, if you, if you get really enthusiastic engagement, we may conduct perhaps two such forums to keep the groups of a manageable size. And the, and the other thing that Mauricio and I talked about a while back in the beginning of this was, he was sharing with me that, you know, you've had a lot of new leadership within the community. It isn't just the district. And that there may be a handful of partners, you know, that where we might reach out individually and, and because they are important partners like the, like the mayor or others that you may deem appropriate, that we may reach out individually and give, have individual conversations with a handful of these partners that you guys deem especially critical to have alignment and, and a common vision for the broader community. So that's possible too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alexander. Vice President Tillman.
So, one technical question for Mr. Ariano. You mentioned that AI took the results and told you what was the top priority when you say AI. What do you mean?
I'm sorry. Thank you for the question, Vice President Tillman. It's, Thought Exchange uses artificial intelligence, basically the algorithms. And it spits out by reading the context of all 1,000 entries or 2,000 entries or the 3,000 entry of students and generates the list of the top themes that were embedded in that context.
Is it, is it based on the number of times a word was mentioned? Or does it take into account the nuances? How do I know that is what I want?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'll, I'll have to ask exactly what the formula is. But the answer generally to that question is yes. It feeds on repetition of words, it, repetition of analysis of sentences. But I'll get the exact formula, Mr. Tillman, for us. We can get that right.
You know, the, the whole thing about artificial intelligence doesn't make me feel comfortable. Let's be honest with you. I've been IT my whole life. So I'm assuming either somebody wrote the program and you're getting the results, but that's not artificial intelligence. Artificial intelligence is literally the computer itself impacting what it feels and thinks you should know. And I'm definitely not comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think it's a combination of both of algorithm, which is man-made.
So, right, so for me, I feel much more comfortable if you told me some people read it and told us this is the top 10 because they can pick up the nuances about feelings and emotions. That's just my own little pet peeve about, you know, the whole AI thing that I'm leery about.
And I appreciate that, Vice President Tillman. Mary Roan's kind of signaling that she can give me that information for me.
Yeah. The other thing that, that Thought Exchange program does, Mauricio, was it allows people to read each other's comments and star them and like them so that the more a comment is, people connect. connect with a certain comment, the program allows that comment to rise on the list. So yes, it has an AI aspect, but it also has real people saying, "I agree with that," or "I like that," or "Yes, I think that's important." And those ratings make the comment rise on the theme list.
Exactly, and that's what I'm looking for. What logic was used to determine this?
A little bit, it also has that aspect to it, yeah.
Yeah, so, and you have to have that or else, I don't know if I'm getting what I really want, right?
Right, sure.
That's my concern. And then, you know, like you said, we've had new people and of course, you know, I've been through this type of thing over and over and over again at the school district, but also at the county. And so I know that it takes a long time. People come and go, some are in the process of beginning, some at the end, but I'm assuming in the end, this is something that the superintendent wants to do, Mr. Ariano wants to do, because he helps, he thinks it's going to help benefit our students and help them in the end in their performance and then benefit the parents and the community and the employees, right? That's what this whole goal is, right? It's going to help impact the education that we deliver to our students.
That's correct, sir. Thank you.
And we do that while real life is going on, right? There's something happening every day you got to deal with, and what happens is meeting doesn't impact it immediately, right? So, but I want to commend you on the work that you've done since you've been here. I mean, because I get, since you've been here, I get very few phone calls, which means that, I mean, that's a big deal because it means that you guys are doing a whole lot of work and solving a whole bunch of problems. And I know that a lot of times, as employees, they know, they have to keep doing that work, even when we're coming up with new ideas and new systems. And to be quite frank, when I used to hear about the systems as a county employee, I was never excited about it because I figured, here goes some fools, I'm going to make up some more stuff I got to do while I keep doing my everyday work that I get no credit for doing. But, so just be aware of that, that a lot of people have full plates already and they're going to give you the input, but in the end, when you do implement it, you can't lose sight of fact that there's a whole lot of work going on and everyday needs have to get met, right? So I'm just, I just want to be clear, this high level, all this is being done to impact those daily things that are going to make everything better. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Vios.
Thank you so much for being here today and thank you, Mr. Ariano. So my question revolved around, well, my first question is, when will we have the results? Will we have the results? Is that, is that the March date that you've provided?
The March date is the, a review draft of the actual multi-year vision. The February date is a workshop where we can take the draft as it's evolving and give you a chance to really roll up your sleeves and react to certain comments, provide further input that allows us time to continue to massage it. March 5th date, the draft should be pretty well-developed and certainly there's open to continued review and comment, but it is the hope that by March 5th, the draft is at a point where you are ready to actually approve it. So that's the ultimate deadline for the process.
And let me jump in there, Jim. And as information comes available, I will be sharing it with the board in the Friday update. So the results of the Thought Exchange and the formula and any of the information that we gather from the surveys, we will share with the board so it's not a surprise to you.
Awesome, thank you. And then I had another question that actually revolved around the survey itself and the groups or, you know, organizations. So initially, I thought that it was going to be kind of, or at least in the last time that this was done, if I remember correctly, it was a gathering of input of, like, the whole community as a whole, right, and through different forums and things like that. So, but this survey in particular is not going out to everyone or the general public. It's going to certain organizations. Would, will we be getting a list of the organizations that this will be provided to?
Yes, I'll give you that list.
Okay, and then also, what is our target goal? How many organizations are we looking for? And as part of that question, are parent groups, are those considered part of these organizations?
So what I'm looking at, Myra, is a broad representation of our community. So not necessarily parent groups, but people.
Or parents, I guess.
Correct, right.
Okay.
So we're looking at just, not only just staff members, community members, but also parents that would understand our district, that have kids in our district, that can give us feedback, whether it be parent from maybe the special education world, from the English language learners world, from, you know, our APAC, you know. So we're going to try to be as representative as possible of our community. And remember, they're serving as kind of a filter, right, as we create a product. They're going to help us kind of polish the rock till we get to the final product.
So then the answer is yeah to that. They are included in the, in the parents are included in that process?
Yeah.
Okay, and so I do have more questions, I guess, to kind of drill down a little bit more on that, that the process of selecting those individuals, because they're not an organization per se, right? So the process of kind of selecting that, those individuals, and then what does the representation look like across that population? That would be helpful for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vios. Mr. Husky.
Thank you. First, I'd like to echo Ms. Medina's comments around the survey. I also found it really unwieldy. I worked my way through it, but there were times, I don't know that I, that it was really representative because it was, yeah, the choices were not, anyways, I just found it unwieldy as well, so I just wanted to echo that. I appreciate that we're, you know, sometimes it makes it easier to do things virtually, but I would like to see us also have an in-person meeting with these stakeholders. It generates ideas in a different way. People don't necessarily engage in a virtual setting, you know, we went through virtual during the shutdown. I tried, you know, our experience with students and parents, and I've had several parent meetings now via Zoom for our student board members and such, and they just don't engage in the same way. It's much more passive than when they're in person. They don't seem to feed off of each other's comments and conversations. So I would really appreciate, and I think it might be better for our purposes, to have a virtual option and an in-person option, that you can go to both, you can go to, you know, neither or either. But I just feel like we'll get more genuine input from an in-person option. So I was, I'm hoping that we won't just do virtual because I really don't think we're going to get the feedback that we did. And last but not least, I know that we sent out the Thought Exchange, but on behalf of my partner here to my left, I'm hoping that we will also engage the student board members and our Student Leadership Advisory Committee and also kind of at some point run this by them because they are, they're the ones who are being impacted and we are building leaders with them. They're learning much about our district and I think they will be able to give input in a very different way to what we as adults think is important and what's actually going to make an impact for them. And there is a cross-section of students within the Student Leadership Advisory Committee. So that's, and I just want to thank you both, you know, for the opportunity today for the workshop and for the work that you've done already. I think that will set us on our path to 2030, almost at 3030.
Thank you.
I don't think we'll be here then.
Thank you, Mr. Husky. Ms. Avita Esgranda.
I apologize for being a little late, but I'm just wondering, did I miss the opening when every, where everybody's really excited that we're here? Because I am. I feel like it's Christmas or a toy giveaway.
We have balloons and streamers and everything.
More so now that you're here, though.
I mean, I mean, look at us! And then we're surrounded by our brains. This is our, these are our brains, how hard it took us to think all this stuff up. And the survey, I loved the survey until I got to the part where I didn't know how I was going to answer. And I thought, then I realized that some of those questions are probative comments. I had never even actually considered or thought of them in any way, shape, or form, so I did the best I could with what I knew and I leave it up to the rest of you to explain the other things. This is, after all, my first year. This month makes just my very first year and I've been learning everything by leaps and gulps and swimming fast, and, but I'm still very happy I'm here. And I also agree with the in-person thing because then, you know, it's, reading body language is very important to me. I can read your eyes quiver and your body goes like this, I can do that, I know I'll do that. So I'm excited about doing either or. And also, I just had one question, if we're going to limit our partners and our stakeholders or put up a time limit that afterwards, you know, so if you're thinking about doing it, speak up so you can be part of it all. So that's the only comment I had on that.
Thank you.
All righty. Our student board member, maybe, Ms. Crystal Scott, anything?
Hello. Thank you for inviting me and letting me sit with you guys. As I was listening, one of my main concerns was Virtual Academy. So I participate with the Virtual Academy Task Force meetings and I see that sometimes they aren't really involved in much. They do have a campus where some students can go to do in-person things, but majority of it, it's like they're fighting just as hard as like on-campus schools are or even more for the chronic absenteeism. And so I was talking to the principal about having FOMO days, like if you miss out, you're going to miss out on something fun. And she was looking into that and I didn't really like read through the whole thing. I know this is just the process, but with the programs, could we add something to help them out with that? Because it's a little different, but as she was saying, like, it's not really as engaging. I don't know if there's another thing that we could use other than like Math Excel or iExcel or SP Link to help the kids be more educated and be more involved in their education.
I appreciate your comments and we're happy that you're here. You're part of the team, that's why you're sitting with us, so thanks for being here. That's the very reason why we have the Task Force, because we do want to make the Virtual Academy into something that our kids and our community may want that's different or they want the same that other schools may have. So that's exactly the purpose of that and I'm glad you're serving on that committee. And so our hope is we don't have to wait till the end of that academy or that committee to make changes. There are things that we can implement. I know our team, our fabulous team that's sitting behind you, be willing to make things happen quickly if it's something that's going to benefit kids at the moment. So I appreciate that. We will be on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. Vios.
Sorry, really quickly, I have one more question left. Could I get a copy of my survey that I turned in? I don't know if we receive a copy or not, but the surveys.
We can do that, I don't know. We can just print it out, right, Jim?
You talk about the electronic survey?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, the, those are submitted anonymously, so I do not know whose is whose. I think there's a computer ID number or device number that you used, but the whole platform with Survey Monkey is an anonymous platform. So the benefit of having an individual interview with you is that we can work through some of those questions or issues where maybe you wanted to add or embellish or take a different tack with. So we can certainly do that in the individual interview, but I'm not able to know which set of responses are particularly yours.
Okay, the reason why I ask is because they were hefty questions and I did spend a while really putting in effort trying to answer those questions and I think, I think I did a pretty good job. I don't know that I'd be able to communicate that or express that in an interview again. And like I said, I was kind of really excited about the answers that I had provided.
Yes.
So, kind of a.
Well, and what I'm going to do with the interviews, just so you all know, is I'm going to look at all of the survey responses and find themes or issues that I feel, whether you particularly expressed something or not, get your perspective on what I'm reading or what I'm finding or what I'm seeing in all of the results combined. And so I think you'd be able to obviously speak from your perspective, your set of experiences pretty easily on that, but I will be probing sort of the thematics of what I'm reading, not just your individual responses. So worry not, we will get there.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vios, and I don't see any other comments or questions, so we'll continue with the presentation. All right, Ms. D'Lezio, thank you very much.
All right, Mr. D'Lezio, thank you very much for your time and we'll be talking soon. Appreciate it.
Yep, very good.
Have a good evening, sir.
Okay.
All right. Well, board, thank you for engaging in that first part of our workshop, and then I'm going to transition very quickly into the second portion of our workshop. So, beginning in 2022, the Board of Education here in San Bernardino started something called the Board's Priority List. And the very first list was deemed the top 10 because there was 10 items. And if you recall, a few, probably a month or so, Anna Applegate provided a summary of where we were with the results of that board's initial top 10. And I believe short of the middle school gym request, nine out of those 10 priorities were completed or are well on their way. So congratulations on pushing us on some specific items. So what we're going to do here today is we've asked the Board of Education in anticipation of creating a new list for the 23-24 school year, we asked each one of the board members to provide us a list of what was on your mind about some top priorities that you would want the superintendent and cabinet and our fabulous Samuel City Unified School District team to work on. So the posters that you see behind you represent the individual lists that each one of you provided. In case you forgot which one is yours, Katrin provided you a little card with your name on it so you can recall which one were your items. And we're going to do the same process, the good old-fashioned way that you did in October, we'll do today, is you have a Spender Dot. Each one of you has a particular color so that we know, you know, which one is yours. And we're going to ask you to get up here in a moment and look at the items that are before you and take your time and Spender Dot.
Can I just?
Sir.
Yeah, I just want to chime in on the history of the top 10. We did it well before 2022. I don't know how many years we did it. We did it for, I don't know, a lot of years.
Okay, cool.
And where it came from, because I worked in IT at the county and for a whole bunch of departments, we would get a lot of requests and, I mean, hundreds of requests. So you would get 100 requests from one department, right? And, but you didn't have the resources to work on all of those requests. It's no different than the school district. So by prioritizing the top 10, then it allows you to focus and accomplish things. If you don't do it that way, then somebody will say, "I gave you this item four years ago and it's still not done." Well, now the board is our own blame if it's not done because we haven't made it the top priority. Because in reality, you can't get everything you want accomplished. So the 10 number happens to work. So as a group, we picked the top 10, give direction to district staff that those are top priority we want accomplished, knowing that there's going to be another, as you see on the board, 50 that aren't being worked on. But then you have, you know you're not going to get, it's not going to be, you're not going to be impacted negatively because the other 50 did get accomplished because we said these are the top 10 priority.
Appreciate that, Vice President Tillman. Thank you for the clarification. Yes, ma'am.
There is at least one item that I see that it's on, it's on, the same on three charts and then it's broken into two things on one chart. But, so if all of us like put one dot all over, would it?
We'll combine.
Am I, or should we just?
Count them as one.
Or should we all just say, okay, let's go to this, if this is what you want, go to this chart and put your dot here so that it's not one dot here, one dot there?
Well, we'll look at the outcome. If somebody puts dots on similar language, we'll combine it as one and create that as a priority list.
And then the second is, is can our student board member participate or is this only for the seven elected board members?
I think the school board members, student school board members, yeah, should be able to participate to give the input, yes. I have a question afterwards. Read it. Okay, so then I was thinking that maybe would have been easier is just trying to look at the items that were overlapping, several board members selected and then choose a five out of those five, otherwise, you know, I could easily go back to the ones I want and then it, so I would have preferred to have seen maybe a list, okay, out of all the board members' requests, these were the items that were, I mean, I can write it down as I'm seeing, you know, there's a wellness center, wellness, mental health, and I can see that in several of the items. I can see financial literacy as maybe a few of the items versus just us pinning the stickers on. I mean, I'll definitely do it, but I just feel like we're just doing extra work to try to pinpoint the same items we already.
No, and you're right, though, because then you have clarity.
Yeah.
Because right now, for instance, if we're talking about chronic absenteeism, if chronic absenteeism is listed in one place. if chronic absenteeism is listed in one place, then you put one dot there. That makes more sense than having it embedded in another item with something else, right? So, so we could, if we could, I mean, somebody could go through the list if there are like things.
Repeated?
Yeah, repeated things, just make it one. Because right now, all they're showing are all the lists of each individual board member.
Uh huh, right. Yeah, and so I mean, it would have been easier just for me to try to look at. Otherwise, right now, we're just trying to pinpoint what the ones we select, even though they're, I mean, I can easily go back to the ones I want. And then, so what's the point? So I'm not trying to disqualify us doing this. I just, I know I've done this before. And I just want to make sure that whatever input we provide, I mean.
And you have wellness centers on here a couple places.
Right.
But maybe Ms. Yana could put this in his AI program. It'd give us the magic list of what we want.
Well, what I'm hearing is, maybe I can ask my assistant superintendents to help here and see if we can scan those lists that are posted and very quickly try to identify where there's repetition. And maybe we can get a marker and circle one of the items and scratch out the other ones that are similar so that we know it's already been identified. Is that something we can do?
Or what we could do, you could, not do it right now, just do it later. Give us the list, and just have us number on one to 10. That's what we used to do.
We can do that.
And then the numbers that are the right, then you know, 10 being the highest. So the bigger the number, the top, the higher the priority. And the numbers with the least, the item with the least number get pushed to the bottom, and the ones with none, they don't get anything.
Okay.
So we don't do that, we don't have to do it here. You guys give us a clean list, and then hand it to us at a board, or email it to us.
Okay.
And have us.
Is that the Board's wish? That seems like a lot easier, right? Is to do that?
Right, that's how you.
Okay. Oh, I can turn this around probably by Friday.
That's what I was thinking.
Friday update.
Right. Okay.
Is that good? Okay.
Because he has AI.
Right, he's got AI.
Okay. Then we can end the workshop at this point, so.
Alright, Superintendent Ariano, thank you very much. Thank you, Board, and we will go ahead and take a recess till 5:30. Let's be ready to go.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Alright, good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call our school board meeting to order. Welcome, and Happy November. Great to see everyone. We're going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we are going to have Ms. Tatiana Ochoa, one of our school board members, lead us in the pledge. And she's like, oh my goodness, you picked me.
Put your right hand over your heart. Please stand. Take off all hats or hoodies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may all be seated. Thank you.
Well done, Ms. Ochoa. Very well done. Thank you. Alright, so we'll go ahead and also now move on to 2.3 and approval of the agenda.
A vote.
Second.
It is moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Chuhusky. Are there any items to be polled or discussed? Alright, hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote on the agenda. And I'll start with our student board members. Ms. Ochoa?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Rojo?
Aye.
The rest of us will vote electronically. Alright, motion carries for the agenda as drafted. We'll move on to 3.0. Special presentations and recognitions, and so just go a little bit over here before we get started with all those wonderful presentations, and just want to say, you know, we only have one board meeting this month in celebration of the Thanksgiving holiday. So, you know, as we do, we pay tribute and to the rich and diverse cultures and histories and contributions of our Native Americans. It's also Native American History and Cultural Month this month, so we're going to see some fantastic presentations, so. Before we get started, though, I want to make sure that I want to read what's called a land acknowledgement, and it's been authored by Robert Levi. Some of you may know who Robert Levi is, and I don't know if he's in the, in the building this evening, and if he is, Mr. Levi, are you here this evening? He is not? Okay, fantastic. He's an elder in residence from Cal State San Bernardino. And of course, our own educational assistant, Ms. Syndra Weber, who I just saw is in the back. So Ms. Weber, we see you back there. She's always full of smiles, so good to see you smiling back there, Ms. Weber. So we'll go ahead and start that we recognize that the Samuel City Unified School District sits on the unceded California Indian homeland of the Gabre Lino tribe. The Kimme Way, Kimme Wayva? Kamewava, thank you. Chimewava. Alright, I messed that up. No, just kidding. Chimewava Tribe. And you could, help me on this one too, then. Kaweah? Did I get it right? Kaweah. So Kaweah Tribe, and then Surrano Tribe. I got that one. So Surrano Tribe. So we have four different tribes here that our district and city sits on, on their land. So we want to make sure that we recognize that. And that every member of the Samuel City Unified School District community has benefited and continues to benefit from the use and occupation of this land since time immemorial. Consistent with our values of community and diversity, we are responsible for acknowledging and making the district's relationship with the American-California tribes visible. By offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm American-California Indians sovereignty, and will work to hold Samuel City Unified School District more accountable to the needs of American and California Indians. This land acknowledgement has been written by American-California Indians with the oversight and approval of tribal elders from the local respective tribes. And right on cue, wow, that was really good, right on cue, I noticed that I get to introduce, and he's just getting probably a little structured here, but introduce Assembly Member James C. Ramos, who just came right in. Just Assembly Member Ramos, good to see you. He is a lifelong resident of the San Manuel Indian Reservation and member of the Surrano and Kaweah Tribe. In 2018, he became the first Native American state lawmaker in California. He represents the 45th District, which includes the cities of Fontana, Highland, Mentone, Redlands, Rialto, and San Bernardino. In addition, go right ahead. No, we like that. Yeah. In addition to his elective service, Mr. Ramos is a proven civic leader. He is the former chairman of San Manuel Band of Mission Indians. He has a deep commitment to the preservation of California Indian culture. Additionally, he is co-founder of San Manuel's Band Cultural Awareness Program and serves as director of the California Indian Cultural Awareness Conference held annually at California State University, San Bernardino. We are privileged to have Mr. Ramos perform two traditional songs of the Kaweah people. And I believe it's not just Mr. Ramos, but he also has a team with him. So we want you to go ahead and introduce your team, Assembly Member Ramos, that is here to sing with you today. So welcome again. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you so much for inviting us here to open up and acknowledge land acknowledgement, but also acknowledging Native American Heritage Month here in the month of November. With me is my son, James Ramos Jr., and my nephew, Trevor, who we're going to sing some songs for you. The first one talks about how the world was dark. And the moon, Munio says, well, I like the way for the people. And then the sun, Thamiya says, well, I like the way for the people during the day. And then the cotton-tailed rabbit, Suitt, says, I like the way for the people, make a trail for them. And then the brush rabbit, Jack Rabbit, says, well, I'll make a trail for the people during the day under the sun. And still, it says that if we follow those trails, that it'll lead us to water, nourishment. So we'll sing that song for you. And that's offered as a blessing for us to come together, and I know there's a lot of things that still face Native American students and Indian people throughout the state of California. One area that we had to run a piece of legislation on was allowing all those that graduate to be able to wear their Native American regalia. And it's a bill that we had to run, and it's the only thing that we had to do to write two pieces of legislation to reinsert the right for Native Americans to wear regalia during graduation, and those laws have been signed by Governor Newsom. So we're going to sing this next song, and really, the land that we're standing on, Surrano Territory, Kaweah people came, but also Gabrienos came, but it's always Surrano Territory first. So we want to acknowledge those, the lands that we stand on here today. I just want to thank the San Bernardino City Unified School Board for acknowledging Native American Heritage Month and acknowledging the land that we're on, and acknowledging our students that graduate from this district. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Assembly Member Ramos, and James Ramos Jr., and Trevor. What an amazing performance, and thank you for sharing your culture and heritage with us. In addition to the Assembly Members and Trevor and James Ramos's junior performance, we are also honored to have current and former Samuel City Unified School District students from our different schools, and let me read them for you. Bradley, Brown, Holcomb, Kimbark, and Palm Avenue Elementary Schools, as well as Chavez Middle School and Cajon High School, as they perform a California welcome song in honor of Native American Heritage Month. Audience, please put your hands together as they make their way forward and prepare for their wonderful presentation. Alrighty, fantastic job to our students. Let's give them another round of applause, please. And I think before they leave, Ms., we wanted to bring down the board as well as Assembly Member Ramos and take a picture with them. Is that okay? I know they're taking off, so we're going to get them before they leave. And I imagine James Jr. as well as Trevor, if you could join us in the picture, that'd be fantastic. So let's go ahead and head down for a photo.
Good evening, President, Dr. Wyatt, Members of the Board, Executive Cabinet, and Community Members. I am Mary Rhone Goodwin, and I'm the Director of Communications and Community Relations. Tonight, we'd like to continue our special presentations and recognize four schools that are doing an exceptional job to ensure that students have the nutritious meals they need to thrive in the classroom. These schools are being recognized for their willingness to think outside the box by piloting a program that brings breakfast directly into the classroom where our students can eat and start their school day with a healthy, balanced meal that fuels their learning. It is comforting to know that nonprofit organizations like No Kid Hungry are working to end food insecurity for children across our nation through legislative advocacy, grants, and providing meals. It is through our partnership with No Kid Hungry that four of our San Bernardino City Unified campuses are being honored this evening. Since the start of this academic year, these schools have been piloting a program that allows them to serve breakfast right in the classroom, meaning that students who may arrive a little late to school don't have to choose between learning and eating. When they line up in the morning, they head straight for their classroom where breakfast is ready for them as they walk in. This has numerous benefits for children and families, and that is why we're working to bring breakfast in the classroom to more of our SBCUSD schools. At this time, I invite Associate Superintendent of Business, Facilities, and Operations, Mr. Terry Komnick, and Director of Nutrition Services, Mrs. Adrienne Robles, to come forward to recognize the impactful work of Barton, Cole, Hunt, and Bing Wong Elementary Schools. To prepare for this honor, I also invite Ms. Robin Hernandez, School Meals Access Manager for No Kid Hungry, to help me congratulate our honorees. She will have remarks for us later in the program as well. On behalf of the Board and Superintendent Ariano, we thank the dedicated staff and students of Barton, Cole, Hunt, and Bing Wong, who have embraced the importance of starting the day with a nutritious meal. Audience, please put your hands together as we invite our principals to come forward to receive their school certificate of appreciation. First, thank you. First, please welcome Principal Dr. Janice Gordon of Barton Elementary. Next, please welcome Principal Mrs. Tamika Casey of Cole Elementary, as she makes her way forward. Now I invite Hunt Elementary Principal Mrs. Brianna York to join us. And our fourth No Kid Hungry Honoree is Bing Wong Elementary Principal, Ms. Dorothy McIntosh. Audience, let's give these four deserving schools another round of applause for their work to ensure that our students have nutritious food to fuel their growing bodies. At this time, I invite Ms. Robin Hernandez from No Kid Hungry to give remarks on behalf of her organization.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Cabinet, and Community Members. My name is Robin Hernandez, School Meals Access Manager for the No Kid Hungry Campaign, which is dedicated to ending childhood hunger in America. We believe that it is a solvable problem and that it starts with school meals. Today, one in five children in America face hunger, but there are stories of hope. In honor of October's National Principals Appreciation Month, No Kid Hungry is celebrating school leaders who are going above and beyond by ensuring kids start the day with a full belly. This year, San Bernardino Nutrition Services collaborated with the amazing principals from Cole, Hunt, Bing Wong, and Barton Elementary Schools to launch the Breakfast in the Classroom Program. This program has numerous well-documented benefits, including fewer tardies, nurse visits, disciplinary issues, and improved attendance, just to name a few. But most importantly, ensures that 100% of students have access to a nutritious breakfast every day. Launching a Breakfast in the Classroom Program doesn't just happen. It takes strong planning and a collaborative effort between teachers, nutrition services, students, custodians, and campus staff to run well. Most importantly, it takes a strong leader to coordinate and inspire all the players in this process, a leader with dedication to a whole-child model and with a strong vision to provide all of their kids equitable access to the most important meal of the day. We have such principal leaders, just like these, at Barton, Cole, Hunt, and Bing Wong. No Kid Hungry has been a proud partner with Nutrition Services in supporting this process with training, grants, and launch support with the help of county superintendent of schools and public health. Before Breakfast in the Classroom started, an average of 32% of students were eating breakfast at these four schools. Now, that number is 76%, which equates to over 800 more kids eating breakfast every single day. Of the over 780,000 breakfasts that Nutrition Services has served district-wide this year, over 124,000, or 16% of these breakfasts, have been at Breakfast in the Classroom schools. I encourage you to visit these amazing programs where children take ownership of the program from breakfast delivery to cleanup. But most importantly, I encourage you to come witness how the program increases the sense of community on campus and the excitement that students have in coming to school every morning to share a meal with their classmates. It is our sincere hope that the Board continues to support Breakfast After the Bell programs that address equity and access to food, because as we know, hungry kids can't learn. On behalf of the No Kid Hungry Campaign, it is my privilege to present these 2023 Principal Appreciation Awards to Dr. Janice Gordon, Principal of Barton Elementary, Dorothy McIntosh, Principal at Bing Wong Elementary, Tamika Casey, Principal at Cole Elementary, and Brianna York, Principal at Hunt Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you to No Kid Hungry. Let's give them another round of applause. Good evening, I'm Communications Officer Maria Garcia, and I will emcee this segment of our program tonight. Board and Superintendent, please remain standing as we present the Outstanding Achievement Awards. Cabinet Members, this is your cue to come forward and take your places on the ramp. This evening, the Board of Education will honor students, parents, and staff from Barton, Gomez, Barton and Gomez Elementary Schools, Arrowview Middle School, and San Gorgonio High School. The Board recognizes outstanding students to build self-esteem and honor excellence in academics, athletics, fine arts, citizenship, and most improvement. The Board also recognizes outstanding parents, volunteers, and employees, as well as an outstanding community partner. All of our school-level honorees will receive a certificate of appreciation from our Board and certificates from County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. Our outstanding student and parent award winners will receive free tickets to the San Bernardino Symphony. And outstanding students will also receive a district bumper sticker and yard sign. And our outstanding community partner award winner will receive a plaque made specially for them by Bing Wong Elementary School students. Thank you for joining us today to celebrate and recognize the exceptional work of a very dedicated district partner. In San Bernardino City Unified, we are very fortunate to have partners who step up to answer our call for assistance, sometimes at a moment's notice. This month's Outstanding Community Partner Award recipient is Molina Healthcare, a longtime supporter of the district and our students. Whether it is distributing free diapers to our parenting teens, donating swag for our summer conference, or honoring our school leaders, Molina Healthcare has consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication and support to the district, making them an invaluable partner. Molina's mission is to deliver effective, reliable, and affordable healthcare to those who need it most. The Fortune 500 Company believes every person, family, and community deserves access to high-quality healthcare regardless of their situation. Molina Healthcare's commitment to improving the lives of students within our district is truly commendable. They have exhibited unwavering support by actively engaging in various initiatives, all aimed at addressing the diverse needs of our students. Molina has sponsored a resource table at our popular back-to-school extravaganza, which provides free backpacks and school supplies to our students and families to help them prepare for a successful school year. Last year, Molina Healthcare honored Sierra High School Principal Hector Murieta with the Molina Cares Community Champion Award. That honor is reserved for individuals who are making a difference in the health and well-being of their community. Molina has consistently demonstrated a deep understanding of the unique challenges faced by our district and our students. A few years ago, Molina Healthcare donated thousands of diapers to students in our CalSafe program, which serves students who are pregnant or raising children. In fact, that's how our partnership was born. For its longstanding support of the San Bernardino City Unified School District and its families, we honor Molina Healthcare with the Outstanding Community Partner Award. Let's give Molina a round of applause as Ms. Alexandra Bravo comes forward to accept the Outstanding Community Partner Award. Alex is Molina's Growth and Community Engagement Manager. Alex, take it away.
Good evening, San Bernardino City. Good evening to the San Bernardino City Unified School District President, Board Members, and Superintendent Ariano. It's a privilege to be here today, and it's a privilege to receive this award on behalf of Molina Healthcare. My name is Alex Bravo. I'm the Community Engagement Manager at Molina Healthcare. And collaboration is key. Collaboration, with collaboration, we're able to get so much more done. And it's so easy when you have a partner such as San Bernardino City Unified School District. Together, we're able to serve the needs of not only San Bernardino, but also Highland. And there's a lot of needs out there, from community events to presentations. I serve the community very proudly. And so a big thank you to each and every one of you here, and thank you for this plaque and recognition.
Thank you, Alex, and thank you to Molina Healthcare. Now it's time for our Outstanding Student, Parent, and Employee Awards. And I will turn the microphone over to my colleague Carla Cross.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carla Cross, and I am pleased to be your emcee for the remainder of tonight's outstanding awards presentations. Honorees, when your name is called, with you and your immediate family, please come forward to accept your awards and have your photo taken with Superintendent Mr. Mauricio Ariano, the Board of Education, and your principal. Students, please be sure to pick up your yard sign before you leave. Now, would Barton Elementary School Principal Dr. Janice Gordon please join us at the front by walking down the ramp where you see the balloons, next to my colleague, Mr. Ken Martinez over there, in the pink shirt? And we'll ask that all of the other honorees do the same when your name is called as well. After pictures, our honorees will exit using the opposite side here to my right. Again, please welcome Dr. Janice Brown. Janice Gordon, excuse me.
Next, we'll begin with 4th grader Erin Caballero, a student in Michael Darmar Wan's class. Erin is a model student for his peers and the definition of a Barton Bulldog by being respectful, responsible, and safe. As the ASB class president, he leads by example. His quiet but confident demeanor shines when he makes announcements. Thank you so very much, Mr. Aaron Caballero. Congratulations on your award. Next, we have 6th grader Alana Chavez, a student in Brittany Johnson Walker's class. Alana is innovative, creative, and excels in all academic areas. Her commitment to her academics is commendable, and it is obvious she has a passion for learning that inspires others to be the very best version of themselves. Congratulations, Alana. First of its kind, up next, we have the Outstanding Aunt Award winner, Ms. Hannah Perez. Hannah is an asset to Barton, helping in the classroom on field trips and events like the Fall Festival. She has a nurturing approach when she works with students. Hannah is new as a volunteer, but is seen Hannah is new as a volunteer but it seems like she's been a part of the Barton team for years. Thank you so very much, Hannah Perez. We congratulate you. and emotional commitment by how she carries herself every single day. Luce is emotionally invested in the data-driven discussions to ensure that all of the supports are in place for all of her students. She is truly outstanding, and we appreciate you, Luce Cruz. Congratulations on your award. Our awards recognitions for Barton Elementary School is 3rd grade teacher Anna Ortega, and staff from Barton Elementary School this evening. Now, we're ready to recognize the team from Gomez Elementary. First, let's please give a big round of applause to Principal Maria Martinez. Please come on down. Thank you. Our first honoree at Gomez Elementary tonight is Karina Dominguez, who is an outstanding educating students. She has a great attitude and tackles any task with a big smile. student from Eva Bashoff's class. Please come on down. In addition to excelling in her academics, Karina also follows all behavioral expectations, She is always professional and works collaboratively with colleagues and parents to ensure students are learning and growing. Congratulations, Anna. Thank you so very much. and she is a great role model for other scholars. During her time at Gomez, she has joined the honor orchestra and plays the violin. Outstanding. Thank you so very much, Karina. Congratulations on your award tonight. Melanie, please make your way down the ramp where you'll be greeted by our cabinet team, followed by our Board of Education. And please remember to stand center for a photo with the members of our Board of Education. Melanie is an outstanding student in Patricia Urbina Galindo's class. Melanie is hardworking, and she is an involved student. She also plays the violin, and she's also in the choir. She participates in the Expanding Learning Acting Club, and she's even been cast as the protagonist of one of the school's films. Great job, Melanie. Let's give her another round of applause, please. Next, we'll be welcoming Outstanding Parent Award winner Myra Romero. Myra, would you please make your way down? Myra attends all of the school council meetings as well as the district-level parent council meetings. When she meets with the principal, she is always bringing solutions and her own ideas on how to improve. Myra always looks out for not only her own children but for all of the children that attend Gomez Elementary School. Thank you so very much, Myra, for being a part of that Gomez community. We certainly appreciate you. Please give her another round of applause. We call our next honorees. I just want to share an announcement with the remainder of our honorees. When your name is called, please come down the ramp. You'll shake hands and be greeted by our executive cabinet team members here. You'll be welcomed by our board and our superintendent here. You'll receive your certificate, and then if you can please return center stage so that you can have your photo taken with these distinguished people here at the front of the room, right here at the gold place marker here at the front of the room. All right, we're ready. We'll continue on. Next, let's put our hands together for Jose Alvarez, who is an outstanding bilingual secretary 2. Jose always comes to work with a positive attitude, and when he's asked to complete an assignment, he never complains, and he follows through with all of the requests made of him. He frequently checks in to ensure that staff members are satisfied with how he handled a particular situation or how he's completed a task. Thank you so very much, Mr. Alvarez. We appreciate everything you do for us at Gomez Elementary School. Please put your hands together one more time. If we can all follow suit, thank you very much. Rounding out our team at Gomez, the recognitions tonight, we have 4th grade teacher Iliana Munoz. Iliana is extremely dedicated and passionate about the students she serves. She ensures that all of the students in her class get the very best education that they can receive in her care. She has an emotional commitment to her scholars by showing pride and empowering them to become leaders on the Gomez campus. Thank you so very much, Iliana. We appreciate you so much. Please put your hands together and congratulate her one more time. Thank you. Thank you, Principal Martinez, and to the students and staff at Gomez Elementary for being with us this evening. Have a good night. Thank you. Next, it's my pleasure to introduce and welcome Principal Berenice Rios from Arrow View Middle School. Rios is making her way down. I just want to remind everyone that you're going to come down. We're going to greet our team standing here on the side of the ramp. We'll shake hands, as Ms. Rios is doing right now. And then, once you receive your certificate, if you could please return center stage to the gold place marker there on the floor. Thank you very much. And up first, we have 7th grader Tafara Sabanda, who is an outstanding student from the Phoenix team. Tafara is polite, respectful, and is an overall model student. You will not find another student more excited about becoming or coming to school and learning. And Tafara's goal is to attend the University of California Riverside Medical School to become a heart surgeon. Thank you so very much, Tafara. Congratulations. Next, we have Orelli Valesquez, an 8th grader on the Falcons team. Orelli is mature, confident, respectful, polite, and is a leader on many extracurricular activities in which she participates in, such as Folklorico Club, National Junior Honor Society, the Dual Club, and more. Orelli is always ready to learn and always has a positive attitude. Thank you so very much, Orelli, for being with us tonight, and we congratulate you on your award. Next, we have Maria Solano Moreno, who is Arrow View's outstanding parent. Marisol has served on the schoolsite council and ELAC for the past few years. And when it comes to decision-making, she is always advocating for all of the students. Thank you so very much, Maria, for everything you do for the Arrow View community. Please put your hands together. Congratulate her one more time. Next, we have Norma Martinez, who is a school accounting tech 1. Norma works closely with the school's associated student body and the principal to ensure students and staff have everything they need in order to be successful. Norma goes above and beyond, has positive passion, and is focused on results for students. Thank you so very much, Norma. Congratulations. The last of the Arrow View Dragons being recognized tonight is outstanding program facilitator Yessenia Casillas, who has been an instructional coach for 12 years. Yessenia has impacted every new teacher that comes to the Arrow View campus. She wears many hats at the school, and one of them is to organize professional development and the Arrow View Academy for new teachers. Thank you so very much, Yessenia. We appreciate your service. And at this time, with Principal Mr. De La Torre, please come forward. Our first award recipient from San Gorgonio this evening is none other than Amara Jackson, who is a senior in Jacob Quijada's class. Amara, would you please make your way forward at this time? Amara has been a key member of the music program at San G, where she is a senior. She has stepped up and been a role model for all student musicians. Amara is always willing to lend a hand, and she works very hard at everything she sets her mind to. Congratulations, Amara. is a senior in Nicole Vega's class. Gustavo shows tremendous resiliency and confidence in himself. He strives to step into leadership positions and currently serves as Vice President of the Civic Awareness Club, and he participates in the Del Sol Mariachi and Ballet Folklorico. Thank you so very much, Gustavo. Congratulations on your award this evening. Our final Outstanding Achievement Award school is San Gregonio High School. And at this time, with Principal Mr. De La Torre, please come forward. Our first award recipient from San Gregonio this evening is none other than Amara Jackson, who is a senior in Jacob Quijada's class. Amara, would you please make your way forward at this time? Amara has been a key member of the music program at San G, where she is a senior. She has stepped up and been a role model for all student musicians. Amara is always willing to lend a hand, and she works very hard at everything she sets her mind to. Congratulations, Amara. Another San Gregonio senior we'll be recognizing this evening is Mr. Gustavo Morales, who is a senior in Nicole Vega's class. Gustavo shows tremendous resiliency and confidence in himself. He strives to step into leadership positions and currently serves as Vice President of the Civic Awareness Club. And he participates in the Del Sol Mariachi and Ballet Folklorico. Thank you so very much, Gustavo, congratulations on your award this evening. Next, let's put our hands together and welcome Narita Rubio, who is a stellar San Gregonio Spartan parent, where she supports her three children. Her oldest graduated in 2020 and competed in football and track. Her second-oldest just graduated in the class of 23 and competed in cheerleading and swimming. Her youngest child is currently a junior at San Gregonio and plays football and track as well. Thank you so very much, Narita, we appreciate everything you do on behalf of San Gregonio High School. Let's keep that energy and put our hands together for Custodian 3, Anjanet Torado. Anjanet is a positive influence at San G, where she is always smiling, laughing, and making sure our school is ready for students and staff. She works to ensure customers receive the best service. She even works six days a week because of the frequent Saturday events at San G. Thank you so very much, Anjanet, we appreciate everything you do there at San Gregonio High School. Our final Outstanding Achievement Award honoree for this evening is Associated Student Body Director Jeffrey Junkie. No matter what the obstacles and challenges are, Jeffrey makes sure we give our students the best. He builds his students to be leaders, and he works collaboratively to make decisions for the students that he represents. Thank you so very much, Jeffrey. Thank you, members of the board, superintendent, and cabinet, you may take your seats at this time. And a special thank you to Assemblymember James C. Ramos, 5th District, San Bernardino County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr., the San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra, and No Kid Hungry for supporting this evening's honorees. Audience, let's please give our amazing student performers and tonight's award recipients one more rousing round of applause. And this concludes this evening's special presentations. And at this time, I will yield the floor back to Board President Dr. Scott Wyatt, thank you, good night.
All right, everyone, fantastic celebrations of all kinds of great things happening here in Samuel City Unified School District. We're gonna move on to 3.5, and that is Resolution in Recognition of Veterans Day, and that's gonna be Board Member Ms. Alexander.
Whereas in 1918, on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month in Armistice, a temporary cessation of hostilities was declared between the Allied Nations and Germany in World War I. And in November 1919, President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed November 11th as the first commemoration of Armistice Day. And whereas in 1938, Congress declared November 11th a legal holiday dedicated to the cause of world peace and to be hereafter celebrated as known as Armistice Day. And whereas in 1954, after having been through both World War II and the Korean War, Congress amended the Act of 1938 by striking out the word "armistice" and inserting the word "veterans" to declare November 11th as a day to honor American veterans of all wars. And whereas on the Veterans Day, citizens across the United States pause to reflect and honor our veterans, past and present, those still MIA and the brave Americans whose service today enables us to enjoy peace and freedom in the greatest nation in the world. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education does hereby recognize November 11th, 2023, as Veterans Day. On this day and every day, Americans should honor and celebrate the men and women who have answered the call of service to protect our great nation.
Second.
All right, it was moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion, comments, hearing, see now, let's go ahead and vote on that. And I'll start with our young ladies, I believe, right? Excuse me here. We'll start with Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Rojo.
Aye.
All right, rest of us will vote electronically, thank you very much. Okay, motion carries, we'll move on to 3.6, Resolution in Recognition of American Education Week, including National Education Support Professionals Day and Substitute Educators Day. And that will be read by our school board member, Ms. Crystal Scott.
Whereas following World War I, when it was discovered that many of the military soldiers were illiterate, representatives from, I mean, sorry, representatives of the National Education Association and the American Legion meant to seek ways to generate public support for education, resulting in the first observance of American Education Week in December of 1921. And whereas now recognized annually, the week prior to Thanksgiving, American Education Week is a time to honor those educators who introduce students to the wonders of reading, show them how to reason with numbers, help them explore the mysteries of science, learn about history and how it impacts us today, and teach the importance of being healthy through nutrition and physical activity. And whereas Education Support Professionals Day is celebrated the Wednesday of American Education Week and honors the contributions of school support employees who are essential partners in the education process by keeping schools running smoothly, including paraeducators, school secretaries, clerics, health aides, office assistants, recreational aides, and the many others who support educators. And whereas the Friday during American Education Week is Substitute Educators Day, honoring substitute teachers, also known as guest educators, for their role in providing a critical service in the education of children by acting as a bridge to provide continued quality education to students in a temporary absence of the regular classroom teacher. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District recognizes November 12th through the 18th in 2023 as American Education Week, November 15th of 2023 as Education Support Professionals Day, and November 17th of 2023 as Substitute Educators Day, and recognizes the entire week as a time to celebrate the potential of all students and to acknowledge and give thanks to the teachers, guest teachers, and support professionals working within the educational system to ensure every child receives a quality education.
A move, second.
Been moved by Ms. Sabio, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. We'll go ahead to student board members for vote, Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Rojo.
Aye.
Rest of us will vote electronically, thank you very much. Okay, motion carries, we'll move on to 4.0, public comments. 4.1, receive public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject-matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And our first public comment will be Ms. Martha Paez, I hope, Ms. Martha Paez? Paez, Paez? Paez, all right, welcome and good evening.
Hi, good evening, well, I'm Martha Paez. I'm here to voice my concern with children's safety at school. It's, my 14-year-old daughter was assaulted by a group of middle school kids this past month. And in the assault, there were more than 10 kids participated. Since it was about 50 feet from the school sidewalk, no one crossed the street to help her. These kids ambushed my daughter. They had already conspired in hurting my daughter, because they all went together to do that. And they taunted my daughter and forced her into defending herself while depriving her from her freedom of being able to walk away from the fight, from harm. Okay, they had three opportunities to leave her alone, and they opted to choose to, you know, throw her into seclusion while there were bystanders there. There were adult peoples there, because it was a shopping center across the street from the school, while they kept forcing her into a corner where nobody would see her. Okay, and nobody did nothing, nobody did nothing. And she, she, they watched her from far, and nobody helped her. My daughter pleaded with them to leave her alone, that she did not want to fight, that she couldn't breathe, and they kept hitting her, and they tried to take her clothes off. These kids, it was boys and girls, they tried to take my daughter's clothes off, and they wouldn't let her go. Out of all these kids, only two of them got expelled. Okay, and there's videos of proof of when the aggravated assault they did. Okay, and most of the kids only got two or three-day suspension. How can that aggravated assault be minimized as a regular fight? That's my concern, how can it just be, let them do two or three-day suspension and still be able to be in school? Because my daughter saw two of the boys today, and she told me, her voice breaking, she's like, Mom, my dad was bringing home, and we saw two of the kids walking home from school. Where's the safety for our kids? If it was so easy for those kids to do that, I mean, it could have been any other person's child. Okay, and thank God, nothing happened to my daughter, I did, she got a CT scan. She did have blows to her head, but nothing of major concern. Okay, and the kids were not punished accordingly to the severity of the assault committed. Okay, I am no lawyer or anything like that, but even I could tell that there were several criminal actions committed towards my daughter that day. So my concern is safety of our students, with at least teachers being able to walk across the street out of the school and disperse the crowds. Okay, and not even the securities would just stand there and watch from far when the crowds are gathered, and I have proof of that, because the next day, I went to talk to some of the students. A crowd started gathering, and I have pictures of the security just standing from far. Okay, so where's the safety for our kids? And then, in the expulsions, how could it just be minimized? Minimized in, my daughter, they just take, okay, one kid is gonna get expelled, the parent just gets him out of the district, and the kid could come back next month, because he didn't get expelled? You know, if the case is over, it's closed, how is he gonna get expelled when he comes back, if the case is over? Okay, my daughter still goes to this district. What about if they put those kids in the school she goes to, where's her safety? And as, I mean, as a community member, I think everybody's concern is about their children's safety. And these kids did have no regards towards my daughter. They didn't let her go, they didn't let her go. My daughter pleaded with them, there was no cops around. Three times, she hid in back of a car, she tried to hide in back of a car. There's videos where she's trying to hide, and they got her again. And while adults were watching, but nobody helped her. My daughter, my, this daughter, she's small, my other daughter is smaller. She's shorter and very thin, and she still, she still had a fight to defend herself against more than 10 kids. While one of the kids, one of the boys, was holding her head down to the ground while the other ones were hitting her, and another one was trying to pull her pants down.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paez, let me see. Ms. Paez, real quick, which school was that? Okay, middle school, okay. I thought I might have saw a light. All right, all right, then we'll have somebody follow you up, follow up with you from superintendent's office, okay? So, thank you for being here this evening.
President Wyatt, just as a follow-up, I have been working with Ms. Paez. We have Mr. Chavez here tonight, we'll continue to do so. We've also been working with Positive Youth Development, and we'll be meeting with Ms. Paez with her concerns on Monday as well, to see how we can continue to move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Ponce.
Give the board an update.
Appreciate that. All right, our next public speaker is Carmen Paez, welcome, Ms. Paez.
I have everything on my phone. I'm Carmen Paez.
Is the microphone on? Press the button in front of you.
I am Carmen Paez, I'm daughter Martha, and I'm the older sister of my sister, the one that got, like, in that situation. And I am a minor, but I'm basing my concerns on this topic. But before I continue, I do want to warn administrators and every adult in here that I will be mentioning explicit topics. Because as much as I wanted to voice my concerns before, I used delicate choices of topics, but I was not hurt. My sister, on October 23, 2023, got jumped by a group of kids from King Middle School. My sister is barely 14 years old, she is not like, she's barely 14 years old. She's around 4'8", and the kids that jumped her were boys and girls. There's multiple videos of her being ambushed, kicked, punched, and hit in many forms that could have left her injured for a period of time. And I think, God, injuries were not permanent, as we'll be know so far. Other videos that were once posted online were only posted by the viewers. This situation was not an accident, it was done in Malasak. There has been many posts roaming online with my sister's shirt above her bra. There has been many posts roaming online with my little sister's shirt above her bra. Which can and is considered child pornography online and sexual assault. There was also an attempt to pull down her pants, which is also considered sexual assault. There's a video of my little sister begging just to not be hit and she still was jumped after her begging. As long as I can remember, I was taught as a child specifically by this district that no is no. And if the crime continues, that is sexual assault. It is devastating that to like stand here and use these explicit words and just be heard because seeing the videos and watching the action happen across the school was not enough for King Middle School. Although I understand it is a process to make a change, there should have been the change that is needed from the beginning to prevent things like this. Maybe the school could have had offices outside of campus, especially with the reputation they carry. Because I've heard other parents waste their concerns as well and they've told me multiple stories of that happening to their kid. And not even fifty feet away from the campus. Personally, my school has security around campus. No, has security in campus and law enforcement around campus. Which many schools should consider working on. When I got the cla, the call in class about my little sister being in ambulance because a group of kids thought it was funny to bully her. I was scared personally. I was worried. I didn't know she, how she looked at the moment. But even thinking about her crying and having to beg for her safety and dignity shattered my heart. Our father hasn't seen any of the videos. He hasn't been able to see them. And many of my family members have not seen the videos. Out of all my siblings, I have been the only one watching the videos because I've been getting them sent from other students from other schools. It is upsetting having to see my father cry over the situation randomly, especially because he is not the type to like show his emotions like that. And he hasn't been able to think right and still has to work while worrying about his daughter's safety. As much as that affected my family, I know this has affected many other families. I know parents of, who allow their students, not their students, I know parents that are in this situation who had like, whose kids like hurt my sister are scared as well. But I don't think they understand how much it affected my own family, specifically like my little sister. And she was very like, I don't know, she's very an outgoing person. And she has her oldest there, like a lot, watching all of that. But that's all I had to say. I don't have more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paez. I do have a board member question, comment. Um, Carmen, can you come back up? And we'll start with Ms. Sabios, board member Sabios.
First of all, I just want to start off by saying I'm so, so sorry um, that this has happened to you and your family and um, I thank you for coming out and sharing this with us. Um, I, I really just have one question for us in regards to the things that we are doing to help. Is, does that include um, support for the family with like counseling? Referrals or things like that, maybe like a crisis team? I don't know what, what we have available.
Ms. Sabios, those are the things that we can offer. Uh, the initial stages were to address the concerns at hand about the suspensions, expulsions, and what we can do to support the family moving forward. However, those uh, health and wellness pieces, those are also options that we have as well.
I, I would suggest that if they're willing to take, take us up on that um, for us to be able to provide that for them as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yeah, I, I also agree and thank you for coming forward. Um, I do want to, right here.
Sorry?
No, that's okay. Um, I want to ask, you, you, so this, your daughter, your sis, your sister, your daughter, they're um, they're attending Martin Luther King.
They don't attend that school.
They don't, okay.
She was a former student. At the moment, she's attending Curtis.
Okay, and, okay, and so this was outside of Martin Luther?
Yeah, and I understand like this, it wasn't in campus, so the school can't really do anything, but I've heard from multiple parents that this situation has been going on. And I also talked to like um, security and the, and a store right there in front. And they said they reported many things like this to school and they never seen any action like being taken from the school.
Yeah, no, definitely. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Maybe we could start um, looking into additional support after school in various locations, especially if they receive reports um, like these. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And Ms. Ellen Grande?
Uh, first, I just want to tell you, I am so very sorry for what you and your family have gone through and are still going through. And you've been very, very brave. Thank you so much for doing that, okay? You've done that for your family. Very proud of you for that. And uh, and I, I, I pray that we're going to find a conclusion to all of this and, and you'll get past this and, and so will your family.
Thank you.
Very sorry for that.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Ms. Chahusky?
I want to echo my colleagues and, and thank you for coming forward. I know it took a lot for you to stand here in front of us today and, and thank you to your mother as well. And I know this has been a very traumatic time for your family. I'm glad that um, Ms. Sabios brought up about counseling and, and I hope that you guys will um, take us up on that and, and we really want to help and support your, your sister. Um, and I just want to say also that um, you know, the safety of our students on the way to and from school is really important. It's been safe routes has been a, a passion of mine to make sure that our kids are there safely and that includes incidents like this. So thank you for bringing it forward so that we can address situations like this and make sure that all of our kids get to and from school safely. So we appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Chahusky. Ms. Scott?
I would also like to apologize to you and your family for the traumatic event that you've had to experience. Uh, what they're saying is true. We do really appreciate you coming up here and saying this. Hopefully you encourage other people who've probably dealt with something similar to speak out because it's important that you get your voice out there and that we hear your story so that there can be a difference. And I hope that your family gets all the love and support that they need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, and thank you, Ms. Paez. Appreciate your comments. Alright, our next public speaker and comment is Ms. Tammy Martinez. Welcome.
Good evening. It's nice to see you again. And it's nice to put some faces to the new names, so welcome. I'm Tammy Martinez. I'm one of the directors of SOAR Charter Academy. And as always, we just want to extend an open invitation anytime anybody would, you know, like to come by and see what we're doing over there. I know you guys are really busy. School year seems to be flying by. We're about to hit Christmas break here pretty soon. So I just brought our annual invitations to our annual Christmas play. We have forty-eight speaking parts, grades kindergarten through eighth. And then the other three hundred some odd kids are still incorporated into the play in the chorus and the dancing and the music. So the play encompasses all four hundred and fifty-two of our students. So it's a really big production and we will be at Indian Springs Performing Arts Center again this year. Two nights, Wednesday, December thirteenth or Thursday, December fourteenth. And um, contact info is on your invitation and we'd love to have you and your families uh, join us and come see what our amazing kids are doing. So can I, over here? It's nice to see you guys again. Have a great night.
You too, Ms. Martinez. Thank you for the invitation. Alright, our next public comment and speaker is Ms. Ashley Vitasalkala. Welcome. Alright, woo-hoo. And good evening to our SBTA folks out there as well. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Superintendent Ariano, board and cabinet members. I'm Ashley Vitasalkala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. Speaking to you tonight on behalf of our three thousand members. First, um, tonight, I'd like to let you know that um, this is our tenth annual um, SBTA Human Rights Committee Holiday Food Drive that we just started. Um, this year, we're going to extend it through um, December. So you'll have some information and a QR code if you'd like to donate. Um, we're partnering again this year with Ms. Vicki Lee, the district's homeless liaison. And also with um, the Family Engagement Department under Dr. Gonzalez's um, leadership. And we hope to bring some holiday cheer to many of our students and their families throughout the district. And I would like to take a moment to thank um, our members, the board, and cabinet members who've donated in the past. We invite you again to um, join us in um, giving during the season to help out our families. Um, I also wanted to acknowledge um, the great work of our school psychologists. Last week, we celebrated their contributions to education during National School Psychology Week. And I want to take a moment to thank them and honor um, them for their continued support of our students' growth. Also, as you um, passed a resolution a few minutes ago, this is also American Education Week. Um, it was created by the National Education Association, which SBTA is a part of. Um, and it includes two um, days which we recognize other educators within our family. National Education Support Professionals Day, which is tomorrow, and Substitute Educators Day, which is on Friday. The National Education Support Professional Day was established by the National Education Association to recognize and honor the contributions of our school support employees. I want to thank the ESPs in our district who provide invaluable service and our essential partners working alongside our members to educate our children every day. And on Friday, we honor our substitute educators who also provide a critical link in the education of our public school children by serving as a bridge to provide continued education in the temporary absence of our regular classroom teachers. We acknowledge these individuals as essential to our work with students, our school psychologists, our ESPs, and our substitute educators. And we sincerely thank them for their contributions to our students and our greater education community. I also want to take a moment tonight to thank the hard work of our teachers in the classroom. As a district who receives federal funding under the Title I of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, we do understand that there are certain requirements that our district must follow. One such requirement is a letter that is generated to notify families when a teacher is not considered to be highly qualified under federal law. This could be due to having an emergency credential, a supplemental authorization to teach a subject, or teaching an elective course like Avid that does not have a specific credential. SBTA was extremely disappointed to find out that these letters were generated this year and sent to families without prior notification to not only the affected teachers, but also their administrators and SBTA. It's also come to our attention that there were errors made when the letters were generated. For example, we discovered that teachers who, under the definition, are highly qualified, still have letters sent to their students in error, which caused undue stress to not only the teachers, but also the students and their families. We understand that HR has taken steps to correct any errors that were made. However, the damage to the reputation and credibility of our educators and the district has already suffered. And we still have not had an acknowledgement to our members from the district that this error was made. Except for correction letters that were sent out to members who contacted HR. We acknowledge that this process will continue in the future as it's required under the law. But we expect the district will be inclusive and transparent in communicating this process to every and at every step with our members and with SBTA. And unfortunately, this type of situation does harm our longstanding history of collaboration and open communication. Especially in the current social climate where public education is often maligned and unfairly targeted. So we hope that we can right the ship in this situation and um, that it will not happen again next year. One other change from last year is teachers' names did not have to be published on the letters previously, and that was a change this year that occurred. So thank you for your time this evening and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Akla. And we have a uh, question, comment from Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, no, thank you for sharing this. First of all, thank you for the food drive. And um, but I do have a question regards to the four-week letter uh, template that you gave us. When, were those letters sent out this school year?
They have to be sent out if the teacher is teaching um, for four weeks or more that under the law is not highly qualified. And federal law sometimes differs from the um, CTC requirements for credentialing.
But, so they have sent them out or they have not sent them out?
They have to send them out after four weeks. And they have to send it each semester. So it will go out again next semester for any teachers that are still um, teaching subjects that are not highly qualified.
And then the other, the other question would be, this language that you provided us, is this the language that we are using?
It's the language that's required by the California Department of Education that you cannot deviate from.
We cannot make any adjustments to this language?
Not unless um, the district gets approval from the state. It's federal, federal requirement, which is why I gave you a copy of it so you know exactly what it looks like.
Okay, thank you.
So we just hope to work together on informing and providing talking points in the future so our families are aware as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina and Ms. Sabios. And then we have one more after that.
Just very quickly, thank you. Um, at the end, you said something about last year, um, teachers' names were included or were not included?
To our knowledge, the teacher's name was not, was not required to be
Oh, it was not required, but it was, but it was included.
Yes. This year, that, that change was made.
I see. So last year it wasn't a requirement, but it did happen. Teacher's names were included.
Letters were generated, but it did not include the name of the teacher. It just stated that your student is being taught by a teacher who is not highly qualified under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. Ms. Aviles Grande?
Thank you for coming and letting us in on what has happened. I can't imagine as a teacher myself to have been put on a list with my name on it and I really was qualified for it. I would have been able to think of anything else, except, you know, the children, of course, but I apologize. Um, I really do as knowing how those teachers must have felt. It must have been terrible. So thank you for coming and, and letting us know so much.
Thank you, Ms. Grande, and thank you again, Ms. Akla. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, we had a comment from one of our student board members, so, yep.
Hello, I just, yeah, could, because when the letters went out, I know from personal experience, it was there is a lot of like students sharing these letters and being like, oh my gosh, our teachers are not qualified to teach us. And I know my, my household got like three or four of these letters and it was just like, wow, like educa, like education across the board. So I do feel like there has to be like some formal apology to the teachers because uh, my, I have a teacher, Mr. Winter, who I got, I received a letter for. And the reason Mr. Winter got this letter is because he teaches speech and debate, which is an elective class. So since speech and debate isn't like, there's not a set curriculum for the speech and debate class, that he received this and there's, it's just very sad because I heard him speak, he was talking to me how it was frustrating because that your te, it's a respect thing as well, when your teachers feel like, like they're not getting respect from a student because that their students don't think they're qualified enough. I think that, like when it went out and then the apology letter, which we also got like four of, was not the needed necessary because what it really hurt was the teachers. Like it wasn't, it was one thing to be like, oh my gosh, like the parents, right? But I also think for the reputation or just the the teachers to be considered and how that impacted. Because I know that was, that was actually something big that, that was like ma, many students received. And it was something that was like very concerning to a lot of people too because so I think that, I, I, I just feel very strongly about that and I'm very happy that you brought that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, our next public speaker and comment is Ms. Crystal Scott. Ms. Crystal Scott here. Nope, I was wondering if that was you? No, I was thinking, I was like, is that you? Alright, well, Ms. Scott, if you are around, maybe out in the lobby, we will give you that honor if you come back in. So we'll go to our next person. And it looks like Ms. Michelle Jackson. Ms. Michelle Jackson, welcome and good evening.
Good evening. Uh, Superintendent Ariano, Board President Dr. Wyatt, Vice President, Board Vice President, uh, Mr. Tillman, and Board Members. And I'm sorry if I missed anyone. Good evening. My name is Michelle Jackson and I am a uh, grandparent volunteer. And I just wanted to come up to share my positive experience that I had, and particularly today. Uh, I want to just share, touch on an, an article that I read. Um, that was in the um, Precinct Reporter Group. Uh, where it stated that the San Bernardino Black Student Grades Were the Worst of All. And it just talked about, and you probably are aware of the article, but it just talked about uh, the local black students are barely eking out a passing grade enough to graduate high school. Um, high school. And the count, there was a percentage of black students that met or exceeded the English standard compared, compared it to the other ethnicities of students. And how black parents must also be more engaged regarding their schools and funding allocations. the other thing that stood out to me were that 90% of our black students are low-income. And, excuse me. Yes, those were some of the points that stood out for me, that I felt after reading that, it was kind of degrading, belittling, belittling to the black students and their parents. No, all of them aren't suffering. All of them aren't in that category. But when you read something like that, it just kind of puts all black students into one pot, to me, my opinion. So therefore, with that, I wanted to come up and share the positive experience that I had today. At Del Vallejo Middle School, I went to volunteer, and was able to see those black students interact, talk with them, and see them acting accordingly in class. I'd have to say that there are some positive jewels and gems at Del Vallejo Middle School. Again, my opinion. Those children just need to be nurtured. They need to be complimented, and constantly assured that they too can make it, and that they are doing a good job. Again, they're all not in one pot, and everyone has their differences, or things that they need to work on. But it was a joy for me to see those students on campus today exude their excitement, their knowledge, because they are very, very smart. And I think that they are being misperceived, conceived, because of the category that they are put in. We have articles like that. So again, I just wanted to say that you gotta, you've got a winning team over there at Del Vallejo. They are going to be something special, as they're guided through, and again, talked to and complimented upon, because that's all kids want to really hear, is how well they're doing, and they want to be complimented. I have something positive said to them every now and again versus the other negativity. So with that being said, thank you for your time, and I just wanted to share my experience with you all today. Thank you, and have a good evening.
You too. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, and we do have a question or comment for you from our student board member, Ms. Crystal Scott.
Sure.
It's just a comment, but thank you for sharing your story with us. Normally, when the district talks about students who perform low, it's because they're focused on the kids who need the help, so they focus on them, and then when they achieve more, they talk about it, because it's a big, it's like a big accomplishment to do better than what you were doing, like, last month or, or last year. And another thing is, if you have the time, or if you would like to, we do have District Advisory Council, and it's open to the public. Our next meeting is on December 14th, and if you can't make it to that one, our next one after that is January 18th, and they do talk about our African-American students, our Spanish students, our white students, our Asian students. They talk about test scores, they talk about NWEA, they talk about funds for our district, and that should be something that is something to attend when your concern is African-American students. It would be nice to hear from you, from the audience in the, in District Advisory Council.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Scott, for that information. I, I can't say that I'm fully aware of all of your meetings, but I can say that a parent, I'm not trying to name drop, but Mia Cooper keeps me abreast of what's going on. However, I just thought it was a yearning for me to come down and get involved, and to be on campus where I can see for myself how the children are, you know, acting, are being perceived, or, and I'm not saying that they are all are good, because some of them do kind of stand out and make that attention drawn to them, but Mia keeps me abreast. And so as of February, I, that is my goal and my plan, to be more involved. So yes, thank you, I'm not just up here talking, I do plan to definitely get involved, because I have my grandbabies that are here, too. So I'm interested in ensuring that they ebb and flow and have a positive experience as well. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Jackson, we appreciate your time and your comments.
You're welcome.
And your support. Alrighty, folks, I believe that is it for public comments. Oh, Crystal Scott, I was told Ms. Crystal Scott might be here? Welcome, Ms. Scott, come on down. Good evening.
Hello, everybody. I want to thank you for your time for hearing me today. I have some concerns regarding safety. My, I have two children that attend Shannon Hills Middle School, and the both of them have experienced school violence. My daughter is a seventh, they're both seventh graders, I'm sorry. And my daughter was choked by another student, a male student, on August, August 30th. And then in September 18th, another student, a male student punched my son in the face, walked up to him and punched him in the face. I've spoke to the principals, I've tried to ask for a safety plan to, because I've kept my kids out of school since the, both incidences. All I'm getting is that they can take action when something happens, but I'm not getting a clear understanding of what's able to be done. I got more information from the principal at a meeting this past Friday, and that helped a little bit, you know, because I've been meeting with her, meeting with the assistant principal since the first incident in August, and I've asked these questions at each meetings with them, and have gotten, oh, we don't know, we're unsure, and instead of, like, checking into it more, it just continuously has, had been, we don't know, we're unsure. I was told initially, when I was trying to get somebody to take some sort of action, that I had to follow procedures such as speaking to Mrs. Applegate, and then, because I had asked to speak to Mr. Ariano initially, because I was under the understanding that Mrs. Applegate was aware of the situation. When I was able to meet with Mrs. Applegate, she did state that she was not fully aware that she had some knowledge, but not details necessarily. She had some mention. So then we further discussed when she and I had met, and she asked me specifically, what can she do to help our situation? And I told her, I said, I'm not really sure. I said, I've been asked this question by the principals, by the vice principal, by the school police, you know, and I've said, what I would like to see is, I would like to see that student that choked my daughter, and the student that had punched my son in the face, I would like to see the both of them removed out of my kids' classrooms. Not removed out of the school, not suspended, not expelled, just simply removed out of my kids' classrooms because they physically assaulted my children. They caused harm to my children, okay? It was serious for my daughter, and a punch is debatably serious, you know? And just simply, the restorative justice that is in place or whatnot for situations, that's not sufficable for at least the choking situation. You understand? My daughter, she's had dreams of this child in progression, you know, just, I don't, I don't want to, I don't know if I should share so much, or I don't know, but it's, it's kind of serious for her, it's pretty serious for her, and concerning for me as her parent. And I feel as though the school has not taken it as serious. I initially had asked for my daughter to be put on independent study, that was denied by Mrs. Flores, saying that it did not, her situation did not fit criteria. So I brought that up to Mrs. Applegate. Mrs. Applegate said she would look into that. Nothing was done at that point as well either, as far as putting her on independent study. I then, shortly after that meeting with the principal, I believe it was, received SAR Board Meeting Letter, because I've obviously kept my daughter out for safety concerns. So I had to attend the SAR Board Meeting. I, I had received a notice of intent to cite, basically to charge me, I don't know if you guys are familiar, intent to cite, to charge me possibly $2,500, or okay, or, or that I would face possibly jail time, right? For simply keeping my daughter out because I'm concerned of her safety, okay? And like I said, again, I'm not asking for the child to be removed from the school, I'm not asking for him to be suspended, I'm asking, please, just move him out of her class to show support for her, to show her that she's important, to show her that, as the school says, safety is our important, is, is important for all students, not just one student, right? Education rights are important for all students, not just one student, right? The education for that other student would not be violated by moving him classrooms, you understand? I don't think, I don't know if they understand that, okay? Sorry, I'm so sorry, I'm just, I'm really, this is very passionate for me, okay?
Well, we'll make sure. Yes, Superintendent Ariano has let me know that the staff are going to be working with you, continue to work with you. It's obvious that there are some serious concerns here, and so I imagine if they're not addressed, we'll be seeing you again soon, but I hope that's not the case.
Well, you'll be seeing me again, my, I have another daughter that attends another school, and she wants to praise that school, because she's had an experience at another school that was not positive, and I changed her schools, and it was more positive. One reason why I don't change my daughter that was choked is, she was changed from Vermont Elementary School, where she was assaulted by a student, okay? Her ribs were bruised, all right? I pulled her immediately. I didn't fully take into consideration, I didn't hear her out of what she would prefer, right? I acted as a parent, and I took her out. And she changed her, she had to leave her friends, she had to leave all of that. She had to go to Shannon Hills and make new friends, and she was doing that. She was doing that, she established things, she was looking forward to trying out for cheerleading this month, okay? And because I've kept her home due to the safety concerns, she may not be able to pursue that. And that's, that's also harming her emotionally. And I, I feel so confused, if I'm doing the right thing for my daughter by trying to fight and argue and keep her safe and, and show her that she has support? Or do I just let her just be a child, make childlike decisions, you know what I mean? Not understanding the possibilities, you know?
Alright, Ms. Scott, I do have one, looks like, comment or question from Ms. Rosales Medina, and then we're gonna have to end after the board comments.
You're doing all the right things, the fact that you're here, and you're here protecting your child, because that's what a parent does, and so the fact that you're here, I'm glad you came down. As you heard, with another case that we just heard earlier, we need to be more mindful of what's going on and how to create solutions that also helps the victim. So thank you for, for bringing this.
We definitely appreciate your time and you being here. Many of us have had kids in this district, and many of us have not had such positive experiences. That's why a lot of us are here. So when we do hear these comments, and we've heard a few tonight, we need to make sure that they are addressed. So again, we appreciate your time, and we definitely are sorry for what you're experiencing, too. So thank you, Ms. Scott.
Thank you all.
Alrighty, we will move on to 5.0, public hearing. 5.1, let me get there real quick. Be resolved, the Board of Education adopts a memorandum of understanding emergency relief severe winter storms between the California Employee Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District.
I'll move. Second.
It was moved by Ms. Chahusky, second by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion or comments? Hearing and seeing none, we will go ahead and start with our student board members. Ms. Choa?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Rojo?
Aye.
Alright, the rest of us will vote electronically. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 6.0, closed session. 6.1, closed session, public comments. This is a time that members of the public are given opportunity to directly address the board about any item described under this closed session. Ms. Cunningham, are there any closed session public comments?
No, there are not.
Alright, we'll move on to 6.2, then, closed session agenda. We'll be recessing the closed session and reporting out when we come back. Thank you. Alrighty, folks, we're coming back from closed session, so good to see a few folks still out there in the crowd. Welcome, welcome, everybody. So we'll move on to 7.1, approval of elementary school principal. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves appointment of the following employee, Juanita Watkins, elementary principal, Lancashire Elementary, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined. Vote.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Sabaos. Any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. Dr. Funchess.
Good evening, Board. In her absence, Mrs. Juanita Watkins, I'll just say, Board, we are getting a fabulous, phenomenal leader, very equity-driven, in love with our promised scholars and their, and the community that she is about to serve and has been serving for most of her career, and is powerfully in touch with inclusion, inclusive practices. So when you get a chance to meet and work alongside Mrs. Watkins, you will also be pleased at her leadership character, her integrity, and who she is as a person. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Funchess. Alright, we'll move on to 7.2, approval of elementary school principal. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves appointment of the following employee, Ryan Knudsen, elementary principal, Roosevelt Elementary, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by Board Member Ms. Chahusky, second by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion? Okay, motion carries. Dr. Funchess.
Alright, Board, I have the pleasure of introducing another phenomenal leader in our district, has been with us since 2011, served as a guest educator, teacher interim, vice principal at Lancashire at one time, and now vice principal at Virtual Academy. His story, and he made share this at one time, his Uh, his story, and he made share this at one time, uh, his third grade teacher had such an impact on him, changed the trajectory of his life, and tells that story in each and every interview, but leads, uh, because of the impact that she had. And one of the things that we found, or two things, he's a team player, prioritizes data-driven strategies, and does what's best for the community in every position that he's been in. Board, I introduce to you Mr. Ryan Knudsen.
Thank you, board. Uh, Superintendent Ariano, cabinet members, uh, just appreciate you guys having the faith and trust in me to help lead the Roosevelt team, uh, looking forward to building on the work that they're already doing and celebrating those successes. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, moving on to 7.3, settlement agreement. Go ahead and read, be resolved, the Board of Education approves settlement agreement number ES-23, uh, backslash 24-01, amount of $14,500. The Board of Education authorizes purchasing director to sign any related documents.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice, I mean, Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Ms. Grande.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to 7.4. Expulsion of students be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts recommendation findings, the hearing panel, based on review of the panel's findings and facts and recommendations, orders expulsion of foreign students by identification numbers as listed below in accordance with Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
Move.
Second.
All right, it was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. Move on to 7.5. Education Code Section 48915 states, principal or superintendent of schools shall recommend to people's expulsion unless the principal or superintendent finds and so reports in writing to the governing board expulsion is inappropriate due to particular circumstance which should be set out in a report of the incident. The Board of Education accepts and adopts recommendation and finding of facts of positive youth development, nor suspension or expulsion of following students by identification numbers as listed below in accordance with Board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts that students identified below or found to have committed a violation of Education Code Section 48900 for which a referral for expulsion is mandated, or the principal found out due to particular circumstances, expulsion is inappropriate.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 7.6. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorizes expulsion or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding the following students by identification numbers as indicated below to schools of San Bernardo City Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
Dr. Wyatt? I need to pull 428418.
All right, so I, um, imagine you're then you're making a motion, but to amend pulling 428418?
Move with the, but pull 428418.
Second.
Alrighty, it's been motioned by Ms. Chahusky, um, with amendment to pull number 428418, and I believe it was seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina. Alrighty, there is no other discussion or questions or concerns, let's go ahead and vote.
Ms. Chahusky? All right, it wasn't popping up. I was on the...
All right, motion carries. Moving on to 7.7.
On 428418.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, we'll get back to that.
I move that we not approve 428418.
Oh, second.
All right, there's a motion to not, um, approve student number 428418 by Ms. Chahusky, second by Vice President Tillman. Is there any other discussion or comments? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Now we'll move on to 7.7. And 7.7 was other closed session action. There was no other closed session action. So we'll move on to 8.0, action items, but I believe we wanted to amend the agenda, Ms. Chahusky?
Yes, please, I'd like to amend the agenda to move up item 13.1, please.
And I believe that was a student board member comment?
Yes, this is a student board, student board member comments. I appreciate them staying an hour extra, but I would like them to be able to make their comments so that they may go home and do their homework and get ready for school tomorrow.
We have consensus of the board? Looks like we have consensus of the board, yes. All right, we'll go ahead and move to 13.1. Let me get there real quick. Oh wow, it's way down there. All right, 13.1, student board members. And we are starting, I don't know if, uh, Ms. Choa, Ms., okay, Ms. Choa's still here. So Ms. Choa, you have your five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to begin by giving my thanks for the upcoming holiday. I'm very thankful to be a student board member for the San Bernardino Unified School District and to be able to share my voice and comments through a platform that reaches so many amazing people. I haven't, I've had an excellent time as a student board member and would like to give thanks to the opportunities I've been offered, including the upcoming overnight field trip where they will be flying all the student board members to San Francisco later this month for the California Board Member Conference. I would like to share my gratefulness for all the board members who have served such excellent role models and examples for my future career path, to my peer student board members who have been learning and growing right beside me, but also Kenneth Martinez for being such a guiding force and truly helping me go through the correct avenues to make sure I feel I'm making a difference in my position. Some updates on events happening in our district. Cone's mock trial team was victorious against Citrus Valley last week. The Cone Best Buddies Program hosted a successful pumpkin carving with over 100 students. The victorious Cajon Girls Water Polo went against San Bernardino Girls Water Polo this past week. A field trip to the Warner Brothers Backlot has been put into action and will be happening next month for those a part of the Cajon Film Pathway. The WASC visit at the Cajon High School has just finished today, which truly brought together our entire staff and student body in order to share our opinions on how Cajon has been beneficial for many students to receive their education, but how we also strive for improvement. I'm happy with the amount of growth that happens in San Bernardino everywhere, every day. The Student Leadership Advisory Council hosted not only high school students this past month, but also several middle school representatives to get voices from younger groups about the change and difference we can make in our community and on our school campuses. It's never too young to start. We started a marketing committee for the Student Leadership Advisory Council that will start the initiative of going outside of our community and reaching out to elementary schools, middle schools, on what is currently working well in their schools and what would they would like to highlight. As I've mentioned previously, my first semester objective, I wanted to discuss and speak about awareness for human trafficking within our district in San Bernardino. This is something that specifically affects this area. That's why it's been important for me as a student board member in meeting and sharing this message with fellow students. Since then, I have contacted San Bernardino PD, the Sheriff's Department, the Cal State Police Department, the school police, as well as several other organizations in and around San Bernardino to discuss what is currently being done about human trafficking awareness and how we could bring from the San Bernardino county level to our district so students are more aware. I will be happy to give more updates on this project, especially since January is Human Traffic Awareness Month. This is needed to teach anyone how to best get themselves out of these situations. I would once again say thanks to all, thanks for all, allow, for allowing me to speak on such an important topic and very happy to bring this level of education to students all around the district. I want everyone to have a wonderful break, wonderful Thanksgiving, and I would like to say thank you to everyone. And even though we stayed an hour extra, I thoroughly enjoyed myself with all the excellent company of everyone outside, so, and, and the food was pretty good too. So, thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Choa, and, uh, you're on, seeing now, Ms. Scott.
Hello, everyone. I hope you all had a wonderful day. My name is Crystal Scott and I'm very grateful to be here tonight. I'm also very excited to go to San Francisco with my student board member buddies. And I'm very proud to have hung in here as for long as I've been. It's 10:13 and it's past my bedtime, so I'm proud that I'm still awake and still moving. So I've attended some exciting events this month. I had the best time attending the SBCUSD band showcase on Monday. And on November 7th, I attended the Virtual Academy Task Force meeting, and I'm also on the task force, and I'm happy to see how much they care about their students. But one thing I would like to see is the Virtual Academy students having a say in our district just like us student board members. So on last Saturday was the Pure Land Foundation. They worked with Pacific High School to distribute food boxes to our community. And I decided to go and I seen that the line was around the block and that actually made me very happy to see how many cars parked up and they all got in the line, they all drove up into the parking lot. I saw students and adults volunteering to be of service to our community and that really warmed my heart. Um, if you're interested in these events, there is going to be one on the 18th, and that would be at Aurora Valley High School from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. And if you're interested in another community event, that will be from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. on this Sunday at the Ed Hales Park, and it's called a Holiday Giving Sunday. And on Monday, there was a Student Leadership Advisory Council meeting, but we didn't get the luxury to hear out the, um, middle schoolers or their voices because they could not attend. So what I did is I ran the Resort of Practices group, and we are planning to go on a field trip to Sierra High School because we've heard about how almost perfect their wellness center is, and that's what we're looking into. We want to put, we want to put wellness centers into all the high schools and the middle schools. So we're planning on going to, um, San Bernardino High School first, and we're going to present the idea of a wellness center and what a wellness center can provide. We're looking at the wellness centers providing something like, well, we are wanting them to provide AA groups, um, NA groups, and fighting diversion groups. And in these groups, we discussed that it will be beneficial to have an adult who already knows how to have these discussions instead of an average counselor. So I would like to thank Assemblymember Ramos and his team for their attendance and their beautiful presentation. I really enjoyed that. I would also like to thank and, well, I would also like to thank and congratulate the principals from, the principals from Bingham Elementary, Barn Elementary, Ha Elementary, and Cole Elementary on their outstanding job of supplying students with breakfast. I'd like to congratulate our two new elementary principals and congratulate our outstanding achievement award recipients and congratulate our new city council students. On November 30th, my principal, Dr. Tanya Bishop, will be moving into a new position, and we're all going to miss her so very much. I know everybody's very sad, including me. I'm, I'm very sad about her leaving. Um, she served the students at Cajon High School for over a decade, and she served our district for over two decades. And I believe that she left some pretty big shoes to fill, and we will all miss her so very much. So I appreciate you all for having me. I hope you have a great rest of your meeting, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Well done, ladies, very well done. Ms. Chahusky, did you have a comment? Okay, sorry, just talking about, alrighty, you got it. All right, everyone, well, ladies, have a good night. Thank you for staying extra, we appreciate that. We will move back up the agenda. Let me get back up there. All right, we are on 8.0, action items. We'll move on to 8.1, personnel report, number eight, dated November 14th, 2023, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations. As presented.
Vote.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rosales Medina. My ear is going out, or thank you for the correction. Uh, so it was motioned by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion or comments? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Electronically. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 8.2. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves Athletic Strategic Plan 2.0 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Chahusky. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's vote. Motion carries. Moving on to 8.3. Uh, be resolved, the Board of Education approves closing the associated student body at Ingram Elementary School effective November 15th, 2023. Be it further resolved, Ingram Elementary School's administration be authorized to close the bank account in the name of the school's associated student body.
Vote.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion or comments? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries. Moving on to 8.4. Uh, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the amendment to employ employment contract Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. Under existing contract language, the term of employment for Assistant Superintendent Educational Services is extended for one year based upon the provisions of the contract.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by, um, Ms. Rosales Medina, second by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion or comments? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries. Moving on to 8.5. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves amendment to employ contract Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Under the existing contract language, the term of employment for Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources is extended for one year based upon the provisions of the contract.
So moved.
It was moved by Ms. Alexander, second by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries, moving on to 8.6. Be it resolved, the Board of Education amendment, the amendment to employ contract Assistant Superintendent of Student Services under existing contract language, the term of employment for Assistant Superintendent of Student Services extended for one year based upon the provisions of the contract.
Moved.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any comments or discussions? All right, hearing seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 8.7. Be it resolved, the Board of Education Samuel C. and Fight School District established this December 12, 2023, as a date of the official annual organizational meeting.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Chuhusky. Any comments or discussion? Hearing seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 8.8. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves compensation for board member Myra Sabios for the October 3, 2023, school meeting, school board meeting due to illness.
Moved.
It's moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Chuhusky. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. We are now moving on to... Approval of Consent List.
Moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Alexander. Is there any discussion or items to be pulled? Which I do have two items myself to pull. Just got to find them now. All right, I'll be pulling items 9.33 and 9.58. They are both contracts of Samuel County Superintendent of Schools. There is no cost associated with them, so I will be abstaining. Are there any other comments or discussions or items to be pulled? All right, hearing seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the consent agenda as it has been amended. Our debate. All right, motion carries. Sorry.
Item 9.33, Memorandum of Understanding with Samuel County Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Chuhusky and second by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Ms. Sabios. 9.58.
Moved.
Ratification of the Renewal Agreement with the Samuel County Superintendent of Schools, Quality Start San Bernardino California State Preschool Program. It's been moved by Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina, and seconded by Ms. Chuhusky. Vote, please.
All right, motion carries. Let's move on to 10.0 Reports, Comments by Union Organizations, 10.1 Samuel Teachers Association.
No report.
Very good. 10.2 California School Employees Association.
Yes, Nursey.
All right, good evening and welcome. Thank you for waiting up for us.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Y, board members, superintendent, and all those who attend us. My name is Nursey Garcia. I'm the secretary for CSCA Chapter 183. CSCA would like to provide a shout out to our recades, who continue to go above and beyond to maintain a good relationship with students, keep them safe and recent, and became part of the CSCA family this summer. We would like to provide an update to the board as CSCA has been negotiating with the district and has come to a tentative agreement for the reopeners for the 23-24 school year. We're currently still negotiating the MOUs for CSOs, attend running employees, and recades, and have dates scheduled in the near future. We appreciate your support that the board has continued to provide us through the year. Thank you so much, and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. You do the same. All right, 10.3 Communication Workers of America.
No report.
Fantastic. 10.4 Samuel School Police Officers Association.
And no report.
Very good. 11.0 Mandated Policy Revisions, 11.1 Board Policy 3516 Emergency Disaster Prepartness Plan.
Moved. Second.
All right, was that Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yeah.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Rosales Medina, second by Ms. Alexander. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries, moving on to 11.2. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves NDOTs Bylaw 9270 Conflict of Interest as amended.
As amended. Moved. Second.
Been moved by Ms. Sabios, second by Ms. Alexander. Looks like we do have a comment, Ms. Rosales Medina.
Yes, I was looking at this, and so I just wanted to clarify, this came through the government that we have to update, right? It didn't go through the subcommittee. This one didn't come through, and I think I got that information earlier today, but this didn't come through the subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee.
Yes, you are correct, because they are mandated.
Right.
They were either a finding or it's something that we had, we had to update.
And I appreciate that. I also wanted to, when you're looking at the conflict of interest, I also want to kind of like conflict of influence, and I know the Brown Act is a huge piece of it, and although as board members, we enter this position knowing full well what our responsibilities are, just like this right here, you'll see the conflict of interest in the guidelines us board members and even district employees must follow. So, I do want to add, and it doesn't have to be necessarily now, where we add language when it comes to the Brown Act, additional language when it comes to the Brown Act, and making sure that everyone is also abiding by that. Because like I said, it's our responsibility, we enter this position, we have to be following.
Yes, thank you. We can do that. There's, there is minimum language that is required by law, but we can absolutely add more. Thank you.
All righty, any other comments or concerns? Very good, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries, moving on to 12.0, 12.1 Approval of New Board Bylaw, wait, yeah, that is correct. Approval of New Board Bylaw, Expenditure of Public Funds to Third Party Organizations. All right. Board Review New Board Policy Bylaw as previously reviewed by the Subpolicy Committee on November 8, 2023. The Board has additional revisions they would like to make. Changes will be made to reflect these additional revisions and re-submitted for second reading and final board adoption at the upcoming board meeting. If no changes are required and the Board is in agreement with this bylaw, it can be adopted without a second reading.
Moved.
Second.
It is moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Sabios. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Ms. Scott? Sorry, I've been forgetting you, so you can vote on this one. What's your 12.1?
Hi.
Thank you. All right, motion carries, moving on to 13.0 Reports and Comments. 13.1 Student Board Members have already gone, 13.2 Board Members, and we will be starting to my left and starting with Ms. Sabios.
I just really, just want to say happy Native American Heritage Month, and that's really all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios, Ms. Chuhusky.
Thank you. I want to thank Assemblyman Ramos and our students and everyone for their participation in honoring Native American Month, and I was really grateful to hear their wonderful singing and dancing and celebration. I went to the George Brown 10-year anniversary. That was just so cool. He was such an amazing, George Brown was just such an amazing man, and they did such a nice job in honoring him. It was hot, but it was worth every minute of sitting out there in the sun to, to be a part of that. I went to the Gangs and Drugs Safety Summit, and you know, Tatiana, Ms. Lachua talked about human trafficking, and that was one of the big presentations they had on that, and I learned quite a bit that day. I'm hoping that maybe we can hook Ms. Lachua up with some of the folks that are working on that because she is very dedicated to that topic, and I think she can do a lot of good work and give a lot of good input on that. I'm really looking forward to the Annual Education Conference for CSBA. We are taking all nine of our student board members as well for the Student Board Conference. They both alluded to it earlier today. I can't wait. They, they are looking so forward to talking to students from around the state, getting input from them on topics like Late Start. That's one of the big things for them is, is how Late Start is going in other districts and how students are feeling about it, especially those that implemented before we did, since we implemented late. So, I look forward to their feedback, and we, we were talking about them to how to like network with the other students and the other board members, and they're, they're just so excited. I, so I hope you will take time if you, you see them at the convention center, just to, you know, check in with them and see how they're going. We're going to try to get in a little sightseeing for them as well because a lot of them have never been to the Bay Area, so there's a lot to see around the convention center, and we're hoping to do that. I just want to say happy Thanksgiving. I hope you all have a very blessed break because it'll be a month before we see each other, at least at a board meeting, and just know that I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here. I can't believe it's been a year. Next board meeting will be exactly a year, and I just want to know how grateful I am for the opportunity to serve the community that raised me, the district that raised me, and Mr. Ariano, how grateful I am that you have come back to lead the district. I feel like we're in really good hands and we're on a good trajectory. We've got work to do, we've got miles to go before we sleep, but I think that we are all, we've got the right team to be able to accomplish that, and so I just, that, this student started it, but I just wanted to express my gratitude for the work that we're doing and, and for your leadership and for the cabinet's leadership as well, because you guys have all put in a lot of work to get us where we are, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chuhusky, Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. Well, hello, everybody. Few items. I would like to also thank Assembly Member Ramos for coming out with his family and singing for us, doing the Bird Song. It was great, and happy Native American Month. Also, happy Veterans Day. Even though Veterans Day was last week, it's important that we acknowledge our veterans. I know we did it earlier, but I personally would like to just say thank you to all the veterans and our school district, just for all that you do. So, a few items. So, we haven't met for a while, so there's, I looked at some of the things I did. So, I had an opportunity to go to Powell Charter Academy, and Mr. Ratten said to show my little stuffed animal that he gave, and I'm really thankful for it, but most importantly, being able to tour the school and learn more about what is offered for the students, not only just academics, but also just the pathway programs that are on campus. There is an opportunity for the kids, or excuse me, the scholars to be able to get their certification in nursing, also in logistics and mechanics. So, that was very impressive because be able to graduate from high school with those certifications, I thought was great and a great opportunity for the students. In addition to that, I had the opportunity to attend the 63rd Annual Debutante Ball for the Swans this past weekend, representing the district, and I would like to congratulate Naima Parker from Cajon High School, who was crowned for the Swans. So, and there was two other young ladies that were also in the debutante ball, did an excellent job, and so great job to everybody that was involved and to the Swans for 63 years. That's a lot of years. In addition to that, CTE, the CTE Pathway Program at San Andreas, I had opportunity to sit down and learn more about their program. I met with not only Barbara Palacek, but also her private partners in the CTE program and learn more about just how they operate as a public-private organization and also their plans moving forward. So, one thing that I walked away with as it relates to the Growing Hope and Farm School Program, they have a plan to grow beyond San Andreas and would like to open up the opportunity for students to further develop their skill sets related to the pathway program, which is dealing with just all of the growing and making more conscientious decisions when it comes to just food and horticulture. So, one area that I would like to see that we explore for this particular pathway program as they grow into their space with their public-private partnership is where can we look for other places for them to grow? Apparently, they did approach the district about land, but it didn't, doesn't seem appropriate for them, and they're looking at highlands, so maybe it's an opportunity, because it is a pathway program that's growing into a public-private partnership piece, for us to look at the city or maybe the county or something like that, and maybe there's an opportunity to collaborate there, just something to think about. And then lastly, so we had a speaker earlier today that had highlighted the article regarding African-American students related to the scores, the test scores that came out, and the article highlighted that the outcome of the test scores was for English and 31 And the article highlighted that the outcome of the test scores was for English, 31.89% met or exceeded in their scores compared to their colleagues. And then for math, it was 19.8%, which is alarming and very upsetting. I did have an opportunity to also, along with Superintendent Ariano, to attend the African-American Task Force in which some of this is highlighted, but at that time, we had not highlighted the test scores. We were more looking at what Etza is doing for African-American students and some of the success that has already taken place. But the concern is, you know, what is the longevity in terms of making an impact? Because the article did highlight the concerns related to our students. And at this point, I feel like it's called action. While with the Task Force, we focus on the Target Instructional Improvement Plan, which was created in 2007. There is an opportunity to go back and revisit and make sure that we're aligning resources to support Etza and to make sure we're taking care of our African-American students because those scores are alarming and we need to see what kind of resources that we can provide Etza, and most importantly, our scholars, in order for them to be successful. That's it. I have six seconds left.
I will just let it wind down to zero. All right, thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Rosales Medina?
My only comments will be to have a happy holidays this coming up Thanksgiving, as well as Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, all these great holidays that we're getting together with our families and enjoying each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And Ms. Abilas Grande?
I think I'm awake. Here we go.
All right.
All right. So I felt it was wonderful tonight to hear about the difference that the breakfast program makes with our students. I'm excited about that and how it led to increased attendance, happier students, and ready to work. But it also reminded me of something else I'd been thinking of for a long time and that was, I would like to see a free or reduced breakfast or lunch for our lowest wage earners who could make more money working at fast food. That's our classroom classified staff. At Anderson, at one time, policy didn't allow for classified to even buy lunches or breakfast from the cafeteria. And they were, at one time, they were told if you ordered it ahead of time, but actually most of the time, we didn't know ahead of time we were going to be there to eat, so they couldn't do it. And then another time, it was, they weren't allowed to even eat or buy any of the leftover lunches or breakfasts. So it had to be thrown or counted for inventory, so they had very strict policy on that. So my question on that is, is there a policy, if any, about staff and breakfast and school lunches and, you know, can we offer them free or reduced breakfast or lunches? I think it would be a nice boost, a psychic salary type of thing that might increase their attendance and their psychic salary and their ability to feel like they belong and are wanted and needed. And I know as a teacher, we're as strong as our weakest link in the classroom. We seek to replicate ourselves to the children that we serve, especially in special ed. They don't think of us as classified certificate. We are all teacher in the classroom. We are all a teacher. And so that, and then I also wanted to say thank you to James Ramos. He's such a wonderful man. He's so humble still, in spite of all he has accomplished. It's incredible if you look at the things that he has led and yet he still sparkles with that little boy smile of his. At Anderson School, he would come in costume and do bird whistles and instruments and sing and dance in the middle of the room. And he did that when he was just starting out in politics. And I'm honored to have known him at Cal State San Bernardino in 1997-98, before he was elected to the San Bernardino Valley College. And I had just graduated myself, I was going to run for San Bernardino Valley College trustee, and that's when Eloie Frank Reyes took me aside, he was my counselor, he says, very gently as he could, he said, "Mary Ellen, if James is running and we need him to win." I go, "Well..." She goes, "Don't you support him?" I go, "Of course I do, but you'd be running against him." I said, "Oh, I'd be the spoiler. I would never win." I was just doing it for name recognition. He goes, "You'll have other chances, Mary Ellen." I said, "You promise?" And he said, "Yes." And James hates me to tell that story. He really does. But I tell it with love because I admire him so tremendously and I'm his number one fan and he knows it. So on that, I say happy Thanksgiving and I'll see you again in about two, three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande, Vice President Tillman. No comment from Vice President Tillman, and I have a few and most of mine are thanks and gratitude. I just want to say thank you to Royal Valley High School, their award-winning Hock Battalion Color Guard who presented the colors at the Gangs and Drugs Task Force San Antonio Safety Summit, did an excellent job, looked outstanding, so we always appreciate them. Matter of fact, I think it was an all-lady color guard as well. Let me say that was an all-lady color guard, which is pretty amazing. And just thank you to Samuel Unified School District as well for hosting the Gangs and Drugs Task Force Summit at our PDC, always a wonderful venue and great hosts. San Gregonio High School Cadet Color Guard presented for us at the annual Samuel County School Board Association Meeting, which was also with the Riverside County School Board Association Meeting, and again, did a phenomenal job. So we've been very well represented. I know how much the colors are appreciated and definitely along the times like right now on Veterans Day, you know, my family is embedded into the military all the way back to World War II, pretty much every conflict since then. My grandfather was in World War II, my dad was in Vietnam, and then my stepdad was in every war since, so, you know, and all in the Air Force. So I appreciate our young men and young women who are presenting the colors and aspiring, hopefully, to go into the military and maybe other law enforcement or public safety, so... Three, this is a big one. It goes back to my daughter's high school days when she was cheering at Cajon and cheer captain with one of our former students, Jaden Daniels. If you've been watching college football, you know he is lighting it on fire out there and is, I believe, a top-five Heisman Watch candidate. He was the Maxwell Award Offensive Player of the Week. He also set two records in college football this past week, being the first player ever to do 350 yards of passing, 200 yards rushing, and then he's also the first college player to ever go for 12,000 career passing yards and 3,000 rushing yards. So those are some major, major accomplishments from the young man right here in San Bernardino, making great things happen. I love when I always say San Bernardino on TV and that kind of goes back to things we backed with Mr. Tillman and Ms. Rosales Medina by giving them uniforms and making sure they look sharp and working with Ms. Regina Daniels. So thank you to my colleagues for that as well. Ran into two former San Bernardino High School...
Regina Jackson.
Oh, Regina Jackson, oh, sorry. Regina Jackson, thank you, Ms. Tillman. I'm going to get in trouble. I've been calling her that forever, so... Glad you corrected me. So ran into two gentlemen, Mike and Joe. These guys are brothers and they graduated San Bernardino High School and they own Genuine Customs and Collision Center here in town. I just happened to look up, my daughter got hit in a wreck and they said, "I gotta get her car fixed," and I went on Yelp, looked around, they're like the top-ranked folks in the city because I like spending our money here, went and met them and then they just told me their story. And it was an amazing story and I was like, "Wow, I gotta make sure I talk about you guys at the next Board Meeting." Because they have grown from a little tiny shop, now they own the whole corner right there off of Fifth Street and Waterman, right by Secumbi Lake. And so we used to have a little shop across the street, now we have this big shop and they just are blowing up and really making our city proud and making us proud. Entrepreneurs at heart, you know, they started when they were both young and, I mean, you see success stories like that and I just, I told them, "One day, I want you to maybe come to the Board Meeting to talk or maybe meet with our kids." I know we have career pathways in automotive, don't know if we have them in that kind of area, but I said, "If we can, we'd love to partner with you." Again, just because you guys make us proud. And on my last note, just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I am very thankful for many things in my life, definitely thankful for this opportunity to be a Board Member. I'm sure my colleagues would agree, it is quite a privilege. You know, everybody here knows if you do it right, it's a lot of work and it takes away a lot of time from our own lives, so I know we're all here for the right reasons, so I'm thankful for all of you, thankful for our District, thankful for our Superintendent, Executive Cabinet, and our employees, and definitely everything that you do for our students. And that's it, and I will turn over to Superintendent Ariano.
Thank you very much. I had a pretty long speech scheduled for tonight, but given the timeframe of where we are tonight, I'll put it in video form so that everyone can see it at a later time. So I'll echo everyone. I want to thank James Ramos, his son and his nephew for being here today. As was mentioned, he's always been accessible and always willing to be a part of the public education system here, so thank you to him. And thank you to our students as well for their performance today and Cinder Weber and the work that she's done to organize them and get them here, so really appreciate them being here today. And I do want to extend our apologies to the teachers regarding those mandatory notices that went out. I know Marcus is very regretful of what happened and I appreciate his honesty and we've worked together to make sure how we're going to handle those the next time around. We certainly value our teachers. We know that they are highly qualified. Unfortunately, we have some mandated letters that have to be done that sometimes are not in the best interest of education, but they're a lot, but, you know, I'm sure Dr. Funches and everybody on my Cabinet agree that we have magnificent teachers, high-caliber teachers, and certainly we will be rectifying that issue because they are important to us and as we heard from our student board members, they're very important to our kids. So we're all very regretful of those issues and we will fix them. And congratulations to my team, my Assistant Superintendents, who today got their contracts extended. That means you're stuck with me another year. They're probably going, "Oh, God." But it's been a pleasure working with this team for six months. We're growing together, learning together, and we have high aspirations and goals in the coming years for this school district. And I'll also end by just wishing everybody a great Thanksgiving and I always try to expound the gratitude and thankfulness that I have for being able to return here to Samuel City Unified School District. Every day is a joy and I mean that. This is not a Pollyanna moment. Every day is a joy coming to work today and I have, to this district, and I haven't felt like that in decades. So thank you for the confidence that all of you have in me. Thank you for the confidence from the community. And we do have a lot of work to do, as Ms. Chahusky said, between now and 2030, but we're going to make this district shine and we're going to show that everything that happens great in San Bernardino happens right here in San Bernardino City Unified. So thank you, good night, and I'll turn it back over to you, President Wyatt.
Thank you, Superintendent Ariano, and thank you to my colleagues as well. Made up a lot of time there, so those of you that were patient with us during closed session, we were supposed to get out here like at 8:30, got out at 10:00. So we put on the pedal to the metal, or metal to the pedal, we call that back in the old days, and really moved quickly to the second half, so I appreciate all of you being succinct in your comments. We'll move on to 14.1, Review of Requests. I believe that's Ms., is it Ms. Ballantag or Ms. Nicole tonight? Ms. Ballantag?
Good evening. The first request is from Ms. Rosales Medina. She requested to add additional Brown Act information into the Board Bylaw 9270, Conflict of Interest. The second request is from Ms. Grande. She would like to see free and reduced meals for certain employee classifications and ask if there is a policy regarding staff and breakfast and lunches. And that is it.
Oop, wait, we have one more, Ms. Alexander. I'll turn on her light there so we know. There you go. Make it official.
I actually had a recommendation or a request related to the Pathway Program at San Andreas to, for us to circle back to look at possibly leveraging their public partnership, their private-public partnership, to see if we could look at additional land. And it was directed to Terry. We've talked about it. So we just need to revisit that to see what opportunities we can look for them, for their land that they're requesting.
Move to adjourn.
All right, it's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. Meeting adjourned. Everyone, please be safe during the holidays, take your time, and God bless you all.